Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of August 13th, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coman.
Here.
Councilmember Bashir Tosh.
Here.
Thank you, and again, welcome to all of you. Thank you for your engagement in the civic process. We have the pleasure tonight of having Pastor Frank Agbonkonkon, pastor of the Redeemer Christian Church of God, to offer the invocation. Thank you so much for your role in the Igbo men of Kern County, beautiful picnic, celebrating your culture. Thank you for your global outreach, and thank you for serving our community. Following the invocation, we have Marshall Sanchez, who's a senior at Stockdale High School, who will lead us in the pledge. He's an Eagle Scout with the Southern Sierra Council scouting America for his Eagle Scout project. Marshall raised more than $10,000 towards renovating children's visitation centers at the Kern County Department of Human Services. They were completed in June. He's been scouting since he was five years old. Dual enrollment major at Bakersfield College in Public Health, and we're glad to have his mom here tonight also. So Pastor, would you all please stand?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for the blessing of Bakersfield. We bring before you the leaders of our city, aided by Mayor Karen Go, and members of the City Council. We pray for wisdom. We pray for knowledge. We pray for understanding. And so, Father, as we meet today, we pray you grant them the grace to make decisions that will lead to peace, progress, prosperity, and hope for everyone in Bakersfield and for the generations coming in the future. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for in Jesus' name we have prayed. Amen.
Marshall?
Thank you all for being here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Marshall, if you would just stay for one minute. Marshall, on behalf of the City Council, it's my pleasure to present the certificate of recognition. Thank you for your service as an Eagle Scout. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience. Next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, proclamation to Belinda Verrea, Behavioral Health Recovery Systems Administrator at Kern BHRS and Community Partners declaring International Overdose Awareness Day in Bakersfield on August 31st, 2025.
Before we start with this, we just need to make sure for safety reasons that everyone is seated. So if we can make sure back there, if there are any open seats, would you raise your hand, and we will just need to make sure of that before we continue the meeting. The impact of overdose is tremendous to all of us. It's a major epidemic impacting individuals from all walks of life. And so today, it's my honor to have the groups in front of me with Drug-Free Kern, Project Hope, who are here to receive this proclamation. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is a global event held each year on August 31st to raise awareness of overdoses and reduce drug-related deaths across the nation, and whereas increased awareness will help educate the public on identifying drug use and opioid addiction as a major epidemic which causes harm and hardship throughout the nation, and whereas local organizations, including their staff and volunteers, play an essential role in raising community awareness, supporting culturally relevant outreach, engaging young people, and expanding access to treatment and counseling, whereas proper education can equip our communities with tools needed to save lives and turn the tide on the overdose crisis. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2021, as International Overdose Awareness Day in our city, and urge all residents to educate themselves on the prevention of drug-related deaths and overdoses, and support organizations that invest in the detriment of drug use and drug-related deaths. It's my honor to invite Belinda, who is with Drug-Free Kern, to receive this proclamation. Thank you so much for all of your efforts, and you may introduce your team.
Thank you very much for this recognition. I'd like to turn it over to Johnny Delgado to share a few words.
Thank you, Belinda. Good afternoon. My name is Johnny Delgado, and I serve as the Grants Program Director for Bakersfield American Indian Health Project. It is an honor to speak with you today, as we gather to proclaim August 31st International Overdose Awareness Day, a day to honor the memory of those we've lost, stand with those still fighting, and renew our collective commitment to prevention, healing, and hope. In the past 25 years, over 1 million people in the United States have died from drug overdose. Here in California, the impact is especially profound, as our state leads the nation in overdose deaths. In 2024, Kern County reported 189 overdose fatalities, with the City of Bakersfield alone experiencing overdose rate of 131.1 per 100,000 residents. These aren't just numbers. They represent real people, sons, daughters, mothers, fathers, relatives, friends, neighbors. Real families and communities forever changed by loss. But statistics alone don't tell the true story. They don't show the deep inequities that exist within this crisis. American Indians in California suffer the highest rate of fatal opioid overdose, particularly from fentanyl, accounting for 37.4% of fentanyl-related deaths in the state. Nationally, Native Americans experience the highest rates of overdose deaths per capita of any racial or ethnic group. This crisis is not simply a matter of personal choice. It's a reflection of systemic barriers, limited access to culturally appropriate health care, under-resourced communities, generational trauma, and lack of investment in healing services grounded in native traditions. Overdose awareness must be more than just statistics. It must be about recognition, respect, and responsibility. It means honoring those who are no longer with us, not only in memory, but through action. A public health approach teaches us that this crisis cannot be solved through stigma or punishment. It demands collaboration, compassion, and community-based solutions. It means removing barriers to care, embracing cultural understanding, and supporting people wherever they are in their journey. It also means being bold enough to say every person deserves a chance to live, to heal, and to thrive, no matter where they come from, what they've been through, or what they're struggling with. Through strong partnerships, we can make a difference. We can save lives. We can protect our most vulnerable, and build a system of care that heals, not harms. Let us remember, every life lost to overdose is a tragedy, and every life still at risk matters just as much. So today, we not only mourn, we commit. We urge all residents to learn the signs of overdose, confront stigma through education and empathy, and support organizations that are committed to prevention, treatment, and recovery. Let us each be prepared to save a life and build a safer, more compassionate community that values and protects every life. Thank you for standing together, for remembering, and for believing in the possibility of healing and hope.
Thank you, Johnny.
Presentations, item 4B, certificate of recognition to Theo Dues, Mercy House Kern County Regional Director, celebrating the 500th permanent housing placement at the City of Bakersfield's Brundage Lane Navigation Center.
Homelessness remains California's paramount crisis. This has been a banner year for moving residents of the city's Brundage Lane Navigation Center into permanent housing. Since the shelter opened in 2020, we've averaged 100 housing placements a year. This year, well before the five-year anniversary, Mercy House already hit the 500 milestone. So to put things into perspective, there are 300 people in the shelter tonight, 500 people already moved from the shelter into permanent housing. That's 800 people taken off the streets. The city made a major decision with Mercy House to be our shelter operator. We couldn't be more pleased with their approach, their compassion, their focus, and their results. There is still much work, we agree, as a city, as a community, to be done, but this represents a major milestone in moving more than 500 people into permanent housing. Theo, it's my honor to be able to present this to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I accept this honor on behalf of my entire staff. They are the ones that made this possible. And it starts with the three to my right. Diana is our program manager. Jessica is our lead housing navigator, and Rhonda is our senior site lead, and they are the heart and soul of BLNC. And on all of our behaves, I simply say that it has been our great honor to serve this community, and we look forward to great successes in the future. Thank you all.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to congratulate Mercy House on 500 placements. I am so proud of this facility and the fact that the city has been able to step up in this way and make this investment, when so many other communities are very quick to just brush off the underserved, the people who are struggling with addiction, who are struggling with crisis situations. We created a place for people to find solace and refuge. And the mayor is right, and it's something that I love to communicate and remind so many of our community members. 800 people would have been on the streets tonight if it were not for our investment at Brundage Lane Navigation Center. And Rhonda has a shirt on, a beautiful shirt. Can you stand up, Rhonda? I'm sorry to embarrass you like this, but if you could turn around. Her shirt says, "Let's Talk About Your Housing Plan," because this shelter is not just an emergency shelter, it's a place where people can find refuge, they can get rest, but then they can also begin working on a plan to permanent housing. And that's what we want for every single person who's experiencing homelessness in our community. So congratulations, let's do 500 more.
Thank you, Mercy House. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are received at different times, depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk for public statements. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a speaker card, place it on the tray next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or in a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda portion of the meeting. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given, a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I'll call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive, and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. And just a reminder to all of you, I know that there's a lot of passion on the issues that we're discussing tonight, and just a reminder that we allow applause during the earlier portion when we're doing the presentations, but not during this other part. So we need to move through as quickly as possible, because I know there are many people who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received 11 speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first three public speakers will be Michelle Peters, followed by Jennifer Haratani, followed by Candace Webb.
Thank you. And for those of you who are interested in speaking on other items that are on the agenda, there will be staff presentations for those at the very end, so there will be an opportunity to speak then, so just keep that in mind. Go ahead and welcome Ms. Peters. And we'll just wait until everyone is seated. It's for fire reasons, we just need to make sure everyone's seated. So if you have a vacant seat next to you, would you just raise your hand? And if there's any staff... Okay, that's... Okay, a couple more seats over here. You can come and sit on this side, too, if need be. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Michelle Peters. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak tonight. As a city resident, I am very disappointed that the 25-26 budget did not include funding to the City of Bakersfield Animal Care Center, C-BAC, for low-cost mobile spay and neuter. The $100,000 that was received from the city last year was used to offer low-cost mobile spay and neuter services to the community members who need it the most, and every penny of that was used. I, as a Kern Safe Volunteer for the past year and a half, have spent hundreds of hours canvassing neighborhoods, going door-to-door, passing out tens of thousands of flyers, and getting approval from the Bakersfield City School District to get information about these low-cost mobile spay and neuter clinics into the hands of students and their families in areas of town that see the highest intake, according to the city and county shelters. This has been a huge targeted operation. We've been in the same neighborhoods multiple times, hours at a time, walking an innumerable amount of miles to get these services to those who need it most, and not only do the residents want it, they show up for it. It's going to take years to curb this pet overpopulation issues we face with consistent effort and money. I may not understand how budgets work, but I do know that the county not only gave from their general fund, but also from their Measure K funding, to the tune of over $1 million. So I ask that you please make an amendment to the proposed 25-26 fiscal budget and/or Measure N funds to include at least $100,000 directly to C-BAC. I also ask that the $40,000 spay and neuter voucher program through City of Bakersfield Animal Control stay as-is and is not disturbed, for that is also necessary in its own way. My opinion is it's egregious that this topic is even being debated, and it raises the question as to where you get your information that funding for low-cost mobile spay and neuter through C-BAC is not to be prioritized. I also have the opinion that it's unacceptable that the effort to curb this crisis locally be up to everyone except for Bakersfield City. Nonprofit dog rescues and their grant money, volunteers in their free time, targeted areas through county funds, and even monetary donors outside of our city and county.
Ms. Peters, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Yes, and as one of your constituents, my expectation is your participation. Thank you.
Thank you. A reminder to... I know you're very, very passionate about topics that are going to be discussed, and just a reminder that there is no applause allowed. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Haratani. I'm the Director of Operations for Strength of Shadow Dog Rescue. Every year, tens of thousands of dogs and cats enter shelters across Kern County. In many areas, the majority are not reclaimed or adopted. They're euthanized, not because they're unwanted in spirit, but because there simply isn't enough space. This is not just a tragedy for the animals, it's a costly burden on taxpayers. Let's look at the math. The average cost to take in an animal, provide basic medical care, house them for the legal hold period, and ultimately euthanize them if they aren't adopted is around $839.70 per animal. Now multiply that by the thousands of animals that enter your shelters each year. We're talking millions of taxpayer dollars spent and the heartbreaking loss of life. Spay and neuter programs stop this cycle before it starts. The cost of surgery is a fraction of sheltering and euthanasia expenses. In our mobile spay and neuter program, the average surgery cost is $190 per animal. With our offer to match your investment, your cost drops to $42 to $137 per animal, an incredible return on investment that saves lives and money at the same time. This isn't just about money, it's about compassion. It's about creating communities where animals are not discarded, where our shelters aren't overwhelmed, and where we teach future generations the value of humane, responsible care. When we fund mobile spay and neuter, we are not just helping animals, we're helping people, taxpayers, and our communities as a whole. It is one of the most effective, proven solutions we have to reduce overpopulation, save money, and save lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. I know there are... It appears that there are a number of speakers. I'm going to call first on Councilmember Bashir Tosh and then Councilmember Gonzalez, before we continue with speakers.
I would just like to make a referral back to staff that we reevaluate our agreement with C-BAC, and I think in the best interest of saving taxpayer money with overcrowding, and this is something that will benefit our entire community, and I love organizations that put money where their mouth is, and they said they're willing to match funds. That's incredible. We don't get that very often, so I'd like to seriously look at the agreement and get to work on that pretty quick.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank the advocates who have been speaking out through social media and throughout the community. I've received a number of calls and emails throughout the week. I appreciate you raising this important issue. I want to be clear, the City Council is very concerned about overcrowding in our shelters, the euthanization rate, and the number of stray animals. I have taken this issue up on a number of occasions because it's such a pervasive issue in Ward 2. In the last fiscal year, we actually provided an annual allocation for spay and neuter in the amount of $250,000, and it was my expectation that that allocation was ongoing, and that we bid it out through an RFP, that's a Request for Proposal Process, and we allowed various different organizations to bid for that $250,000. Mr. Clegg, can you tell us and explain to the public exactly how that process played out? It was my understanding that critters without litters actually performs that function.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor and Council. That is correct. We do have an annual contract for high-volume spay and neuter that was conducted through a competitive process, which was awarded to the lowest qualifying bidder, which was critters without litters. If I may just anticipate other potential questions.
Yep.
In the last three years, we have also increased our funding allocations to C-BAC in our operating contract.
To the tune of $500,000 a year, correct? For the infrastructure portion?
Yes, actually, we increased by about $220,000 the contract, and so our contract annual amount is $830,000 that we pay C-BAC to operate our shelter. We've also invested $1.7 million in the last five years through annual allocations. Typically, it's been about a half million, but one year was slightly less, but it's been $1.7 million invested in capital improvements to the shelter that C-BAC runs. And so our spend on this issue has actually been increasing in recent years. One year, we had some additional funds that we were able to help to use to match against a grant to increase on a one-time basis that amount of high-volume spay and neuter. We were fortunate to be able to do that, but in this year's budget, we've maintained the regular amount of spay and neuter, which again has increased compared to three years ago. But I would also just reiterate, we know that pet overpopulation is a problem, is a challenge, and that's why we've been investing more funds in the last three years to start making an impact on that issue.
Thank you. And you know, we adopted an ordinance, mandatory spay and neuter ordinance in the City of Bakersfield, coupled with this funding, in an attempt to actually reduce the euthanization rate. It was my understanding that up until last year, that rate actually had been declining in our shelter. Do you have that data?
I apologize, Councilmember. I don't have that data in front of me. I do know that pre-pandemic, we had achieved some pretty high-quality numbers. Pandemic was very difficult, and we were on a downward trend since then until last year.
I appreciate it. I want to just again reiterate how much I appreciate the advocates for bringing this issue to the council and continuously raising this issue in our community. It is a crisis, and I do want to dovetail off of my colleague, Councilmember Bashir Tosh, and make a referral that we pursue the offer to match those dollars that are offered through... I'm sorry, I forgot the nonprofit name, but whoever's providing those dollars, that we actually take some dollars that we've allocated from our Grant Match Fund through PSVS, and allocate those to pursue this potential grant match for programming this fiscal year. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to echo the questions of... or the referrals of both Councilmember Bashir Tosh and Councilmember Gonzalez. I think the key point, one, also first and foremost, my biggest thanks goes to the advocates. You put a call out through various social media avenues, and you're here today, and we want to be responsive. And in conversations with city leadership, one thing that I'd like to also emphasize is that you're asking for mobile clinics to go into the communities, and that's the key part. So if we can add that component to, whether it's the agreement we already have with critters without litters, or with the organizations that are here today, I would like to just add that language of it being mobile in some way, because not everyone can come to a clinic. Clinics are overcrowded. Parking is an issue. Also, we want to be able for this to be accessible to all populations, whether you're houseless, whether you live in different corners of the city. So let's please add that mobile component to this same referral, and thank you for being willing to meet the city in the middle and having this public-private partnership and matching those funds. So thank you very much, and thank you to my colleagues.
Thank you, colleagues. I know there are a number of speakers who wish to address the animal overpopulation. If the comments that have already been made have addressed your issue, we have a lot of people here, and you want to forego your speaker card, just let us know when your name's called. Madam Clerk, would you please call the next speaker?
Candace Webb.
Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Candace Webb. I am a registered veterinary technician, and I have actually been the leader of the mobile clinics that have been provided for Bakersfield City residents with the Cal for All Animals grant money that was received, as well as the $100,000 that was allotted last year. I did hear about, you know, we were on a decline before the pandemic, and I'm going to shorten what I had to say by a lot. The pandemic, between veterinary shortages, as well as staff shortages, as well as access to care, really affected the numbers. And since the pandemic numbers have been affected with the climbing intake in our shelters, with this last year being the first time that we've seen a decrease in those numbers, it is after the Cal for All Animals grant money, which was 180,000 the first time, 250,000 the second time, and then 100,000 from you guys. With that additional funding, that is how... With that additional funding, that is how we got those numbers to come down. And to not allot that and have only one option for these people, we're taking two steps backward and falling off of a cliff into a further crisis. And that is all that I have to say. I just wanted to give you guys a little bit more.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Next speaker, please. And as she approaches, Ms. Webb, I know there's this tremendous shortage of veterinary techs and veterinarians, and we have been advocating, I've been advocating outside of this forum for workforce development related to that, because we know that that's a very important part of it. Next speaker, please come forward.
Robbie Mellorin.
And thank you for being efficient with your time. We have a lot of speakers who want to speak. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Robbie Miller, the founder of SOS Dog Rescue. I'm the one that wants to match your guys' money. One thing about the numbers that you guys just said, I believe $180,000 of that money you were talking about earlier is only for feral cats. So then you guys only have $40,000 in your public spay and neuter, which doesn't really with the need. I have over, I haven't advertised for city, because I work with county too. I haven't advertised for city for two months, and I have a thousand-person waitlist. I have 60 people waiting every clinic. Like tomorrow, I'm going to be doing spay and neuter. I'll have 30 people from city waiting, taking away from their jobs to try to get an appointment. The need is really there. So my name is Robbie Miller. I'm the founder of SOS Dog Rescue. And 2014, I moved to Kern County after spending 12 years in prison. When I was released, I had a choice to go back down the wrong path or change my life completely. I chose change, and the decision began with one dog. Her name was Shadow. She gave me a purpose, and she taught me the value of life, both hers and mine. Because of her, I committed myself to saving animals. In 2018, I launched SOS Dog Rescue with one mission, to transform animal welfare in Kern County. By 2023, we realized that the only real way out from this overpopulation crisis was through accessible spay and neuter. In less than two years, our program has provided over 7,000 surgeries, helping families who otherwise couldn't afford it or access to care. We work closely with the two largest shelters in the county, using it a targeted plan to reduce shelter intake and prevent unnecessary euthanasia. Even though I live on top of a mountain like Isabella, far away from the city, I choose to spend my time and resources here because the people and the animals in the city deserve a better quality of life.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And thank you for your service. Next speaker, please.
Kristi Trotter.
Thank you, Ms. Trotter. Next speaker, please.
Karila Enriquez.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. Next speaker, please.
Denise Haynes.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. I am Denise Haynes. City Councilmembers, Mayor Go, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I am here on behalf of Bakersfield Breakfast Rotary. Breakfast Rotary puts on the annual Thousand Flags Event at the Park at River Walk every Memorial Day weekend. This past year was our 11th year, and it was as successful as they have all been. This year, we were really excited to have added two big events to the weekend. On Saturday night, we had a homegrown concert in the park right next to the flags, and we offered a barbecue, and we had a beer garden. And then on Sunday morning, we had a 5K run walk through the flags and out the bike path. And for our first run, we had 300 runners, which we considered very successful. I am the director of the Thousand Flags Event, and I am extremely thankful to the city of Bakersfield for allowing us to use the park every year for 11 years. I am especially appreciative of the Parks Department staff. I want to thank the director, Darren Budak. His and his assistant, Sandra Forsyth. When I call, Sandra is always right there to help me with all of my questions. In the main office, when you walk in, there's Jessica and Elsie, and they are delightful and very friendly, and they always remember me year after year. And I just find that fabulous. In the field, we have Race Slaton and David Garcia. And those two men bend over backwards to make our event successful, to make the park shine. And boy, does it shine. And the staff, all of the park workers, work very, very hard all week and long to keep it clean and to keep it safe. And as a thank you, I have this evening a packet, a thank you packet, for whoever wants to claim it, actually. But I also have, for Mayor Go, I have a book, For Mayor Go, A Thousand Flags Book. And I have to admit, Mayor Go, I stole some of your pictures from the Facebook.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. We appreciate your efforts to support those who serve our country. And you can just leave those with the city clerk. She'll come and receive. Thank you. And next speaker, please.
Dennis McLean.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Dennis McLean. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to express my concerns on the spending habits of this city. You have spent massive amounts of money on the homeless problem, yet we still have hundreds roaming the streets daily. You have built homeless centers and low-income housing that have little or no effect on the problem. You've spent thousands of dollars on bicycle paths throughout the county. Yet your roads, who are traveled daily by working taxpayers, are terrible. You cannot mix traffic, car traffic with bicycle traffic. People will get killed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Mr. McLean, sorry. Next speaker, please.
Cassie Biddle.
And would you just announce the next one so that they can be prepared, too?
Terri Maxwell, followed by Bella Vita Rescue Jill.
Thank you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
I'll be very quick. Cassie Biddle, I'm here as a Westchester citizen, not as a Commissioner for the city of Bakersfield. I want to thank you for addressing the issue with our spay and neutering. I know that we do allocate quite a bit of money, and I know you all really do love the animals. But it's not very often you get my mother in the stands. The last time she was here was in 2018, when homeless crisis was at its peak, and it was just getting started. So seeing us in the stands should be kind of a view into the future that the animal crisis is getting bigger. In the last four years, we have taken in 11 dogs ourself. We've spent two to Oregon, one to Fresno, and got adoptions for four here. Nothing compared to what's doing out in the stands. But that's just my alley back behind Casey Steakhouse. So please look at what our budget is and what we're spending it on. Public safety and vital services are just that. It's not improvements to frontages or businesses. It's making sure that our citizens feel safe, secure, and know that their animals are also taken care of. They're part of our community. So please take some serious consideration when you hear some of these speakers. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Biddle. Next speaker, please.
Terri Maxwell.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name's Terri Maxwell. Hey, City Council, I want to congratulate you. I don't know if you heard, but yesterday morning, there were two car versus bicycle accidents. One unfortunately ended up with a death. And as you have spent all this money to put all these bicycle paths on major thoroughfares, you're putting everybody at risk, especially the people in cars. Now, cars and bicycles shouldn't be on major thoroughfares. You're taking what was planned through this city to be major thoroughfares with three lanes going in each direction and removing a lane and putting a bicycle lane in there. And maybe it's not so bad when you're in the middle of the block. But as you get to those intersections, I'm sorry, but those bicyclists are not easy to see. When I was growing up, if you were on a bicycle, you knew that you had to look out for cars. And now the bicyclist, probably one from yesterday that was killed, he goes right over on Mohawk and Tower, thought that he was invincible because he's on a bike now. I think you guys seriously have got to take back some of the things that you're doing to put bicyclists and people in automobiles at risk. This is ridiculous to have city planning have been put together so much. You know, maybe you guys have watched Field of Dreams too much. Build it, and they will come. Because I'm sorry, I don't see hardly any bicyclists using any of these lanes. You have eliminated the thoroughfare for us people who are in cars. And, you know, Bob, Ken's not here, but why did we spend all that money on 24th Street? Maybe we should have put a couple of bike lanes on either side and saved $100 million for the city if that's the solution to all of our problems with traffic. Is that you think thousands upon thousands of people are going to get on bicycles and start solving the problems that we have? And on 24th Street, I'll remind you, you still haven't done anything about what I came up on here last time to talk about. It took a left-hand turn on Beach Street from 24th Street. It took me 12 minutes to make that turn. LOS would be a F.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Next, please. Next speaker, please.
Bella Vita Rescue Jill.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello. My name is Jill Marsh, and I'm from Bella Vita Rescue. And I did not repair or prepare anything tonight. But I want to say I'm here to speak for multiple rescues throughout the state of California. I work primarily with Kern County Animal Shelter, who is statistically the highest kill shelter in the state of California, over and above Riverside. So the deaths and the killing has not stopped. It has not slowed down. It is, it's traumatic. It's horrible. It's got to slow down. And we have been blocked by the director of Kern County Shelter as rescues that we can no longer get our dogs spayed and neutered, that we can no longer adopt any dogs. We used to be able to get spays and neuters. I was told by Nick Cullen that this is just temporary. We will help you. We will spay and neuter the dogs that you pull. Because if we have to pull a dog and then just sit on him, we can't get him out. So it's like a revolving door. We need that help and support. The next thing was, he told me that, okay, well, you, so we started adopting the dogs ourselves as a team so that we can get them spayed and neutered, and he blocked that. So it is a huge problem. We need help as rescues. I speak for all the rescues. I am not from here. I am from Oakland, California. I have been here two years to resolve this problem at Kern County Animal Services. So we need support. The rescues need support. Because this is like trying to drain the ocean with a teaspoon. It's horrific. They killed 70 dogs yesterday. 70 yesterday morning. 70 dogs. This is, it's worse than Riverside County. I've never seen anything like it. So I want to make sure you guys know what the truth is about what's going on over there and right under everybody's noses, because it needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh. And to all of you who are helping in this cause, thank you very much. We know that it takes all of us, and we have a huge challenge ahead. Thank you to all the rescues and to all of the advocates. We'll now move to the public statements listed on the agenda. If you're here to speak on appointments, Item 6A, or items listed under Consent Calendar, Item 7, your time to speak is now. Again, each speaker will be given a two-minute time limit. Each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes total. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on Consent Calendar Hearing, Items 8A or 8B, public hearing, Item 9A, deferred business, Item 11A, new business, Item 12A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when this item is called, when these items are called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding appointments, Item 6A or items listed under Consent Calendar, Item 7?
Mayor Go, we received three speaker cards regarding Item 6A. We did receive a request for a public comment on Items 8B and 12A.
For later? Or they're unable to wait?
Correct.
For later? I'm sorry.
No, Madam Mayor, for speaking during Agenda Item Public Statements. Not later.
Okay. We'll allow that. Sorry, I just missed that. All right. So Madam Clerk, go ahead and call.
First public speaker is Reverend Angelo Frazier regarding Items 8B and 12A.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Street naming. When I first saw that, my first thought was, why break something that isn't fixed? That's already fixed. For 100 years, this has worked out here in the city. And I thought about, when I saw that, the naming of the streets, I said, well, and this particular person you want to name it after, any Google search would tell you this person said some horrible things about undocumented aliens. I don't know why anyone would want to name a street after someone who's made comments so derogatory about people. I have a better idea. Fix the potholes. Continue to help the homeless and fix the sewers. $300,000 would be better served that way instead of a foundation downtown. And I think when you do that, that will make Bakersfield great again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tanvi Thalapali regarding Item 6A.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow councilmembers. My name is Tanvi Thalapali, and I'm really grateful to be here to ask for the reappointment to the Youth Commission. Being part of this group has been one of the most rewarding experiences for me, and I'm excited about the chance to keep working on the projects we've started. I want to first give a big thank you to our former Youth Commission Advisors, Hannah Rosica and April Tovert, for all their support and guidance. They've both been amazing mentors, showing me what it means to lead with both kindness and honesty. I also want to shout out my fellow Youth Commissioners. I've learned so much from all of you. Together, we've shared ideas, had some tough conversations, and worked hard to make a real difference in our community. The teamwork and friendships we built mean a lot to me, and I'm proud to be a part of this group. One project I'm especially proud of was our work at the Corrin Leadership Youth Conference. It's been a great opportunity to connect with young leaders from different backgrounds, share our experiences, and inspire each other to take action. Being a part of those conversations has shown me how powerful youth voices can be, and I think this is a start of what we can do. As I asked to be reappointed, I bring the experience of three years on the Youth Commission and passion I've gained from serving on this commission. I'm ready to keep building on what we've done and take on new challenges with energy and commitment. I truly believe that together, we can make an even bigger impact next term. Thank you so much for considering my request. It would be an honor to keep serving alongside some really inspiring people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thalapali, and thank you for your service on the commission. Next speaker, please.
Nathaniel Catalin regarding Item 6A.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and attendees. My name is Nathan Catalin. I'm currently a sophomore at Garza Memorial High School. This past year, I had the pleasure of serving on the Bakersfield Youth Commission. I learned a lot about how youth voices can help shape our community, particularly through our project with the California Corrin Youth Conference. We had a lot of opportunities there to see different groups here in the city. Utilizing that and my other leadership experience through programs such as Boy Scouts, I'm ready to participate in another year. I bring hard work, dedication, collaboration. I'm eager to continue working, and I really love the commission. Thank you for considering me yet again, and it would be an honor if I were to be reappointed. Thank you.
Mr. Catalin, thank you for your service, and thank you for your desire to continue. Next speaker, please.
Gunit Kaur regarding Item 6A.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor Go and all councilmembers. My name is Gunit Kaur, and I have had the honor of serving as a Youth Commissioner for Bakersfield this past year. In this role, I've worked alongside other commissioners. In this role, I've worked alongside other commissioners to engage youth residents in civic projects. One highlight of my term was attending the Kern Youth Conference, which focused on preparing younger students to, for high school and inspiring them to build successful futures. It was an incredible opportunity to connect with youth, share resources, and help motivate them toward their goals. It's been a privilege to represent these voices of youth in our community, and I would like to formally request consideration for a reappointment to the Youth Commission. I'm eager to continue contributing my time, ideas, and energy toward making our city an even better place for all residents, especially our youth. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Ms. Kaur, thank you for your service, and thank you for your desire and willingness to serve again. Madam Clerk, next item, or next speaker, if there are any others.
That was our final speaker, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appointments, item 6A, Youth Commission Appointments to terms set to expire July 2026. Applications for appointment have been received from Tanvi Thalapalli, Saisha Gulati, Caitlin Henches, Iman Deep Matharu, Mia Clifford, Ella Pepper, Claire Michael, Jacob Baldovinos, Jasmine Bawa, Aijem Bell, Natalie Velasquez, John O, Tenev Dapuneni, Abigail Arellano, Jabji Kaur, Jazelyn Tran, Samuel Chambliss, and Nathaniel Catalan.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. These are, these are, appointments are by council members, so I will call on each council member. At this time, I will start first. I'll be appoint, I am nominating Jacob Baldovinos as my regular Youth Commission member and Claire Michael as my alternate Youth Commission member. Jacob served as my alternate in the past, and Claire is an outstanding student also. Vice Mayor, your nominations, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, I'm honored to nominate two young individuals and future leaders of our community to the Youth Commission. For my regular appointment, I will be nominating Abigail Arellano, and as my alternate, I will be nominating Jabji Kaur. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. We did not receive any applications from individuals who went to school or live in the ward, so I'd like to give my colleagues a first stab, and then if we could circle back to me, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Oh, I apologize. I may have overlooked one.
Um, actually, the rules regarding Youth Commission have changed. Students are not required to reside or go to school within the ward that they are appointed to. They just have to go to school or reside within the city limits.
That's correct. I just don't want to steal any of my colleagues' selections. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Mia Clifford as the Commissioner representing Ward 2, and Nelly Velasquez as the alternate.
Thank you. And Councilmember, where?
You know, I don't have any, um, determined yet, but I'll come back in the next meeting and take care of it then.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate John O for my regular, and Agam Beal as the alternate.
Thank you. And Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to admit that I'm kind of a bad role model for the people that are suing the Youth Commission. Uh, I have not completed my review of the applicants, uh, but I will come back at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ashir Tosh.
I would like to appoint Nathaniel as my choice, and my alternate would be Samuel Chambliss, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias, would you like to make an appointment?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to make sure that I have it correct. Um, Tanvi Thalapal and also Nathaniel Catalan have not been selected.
Nathaniel has been selected.
Nathaniel has, okay. Then next on my list is Iman Deep Matharu. So, with that, I want to make a recommendation that, um, that Tanvi Thalapal be the representative for Ward 1 on the Youth Commission, and then the, um, the other be Iman Deep Matharu.
From Independence. Okay. Other colleagues, you'll come back later. Vice Mayor, motion?
Motion to approve the, uh, brand-new set of Youth Commissioners with the exception of Ward 3 and, where am I? 5, sorry.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
You can. Yeah, just approving ours. Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And to all of Youth Commissioners, thank you so much for your willingness to serve, and we look forward to your service. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 7A through 7I for approval. A staff memorandum was provided for item 7I-1, transmitting the exhibits, and it certainly left off of, um, the agenda packet and updating the title to reflect the dollar amount of $405,000.
Thank you. And we've had a request from Councilmember Smith to pull items 7E6 and 7E8. Do any other council members? I don't see any other requests. And so, Vice Mayor, would you please make the motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items 7E6 and 7E8.
Thank you. If a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with council, oh, unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Smith, 7E6, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the design consultant agreement with AE Comm to provide engineering for wastewater treatment plant number 2 and the 3 upgrade and expansion evaluations. The reason I pulled it is because I just, I want to confirm with staff, I think it's important that as we start designing these treatment plants, that we think about how we can time the construction of these to work with our cash flow as it comes in. As we spoke about at the last meeting, if we bond for X amount, we end up paying twice that amount. So, the longer that we can wait as cash flow comes in to build various parts of it, if possible, then that will save us twice the money. So, is that part of the agreement? And if not, can it be added? It looked like the agreement was vague enough that it could be.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I'll ask our Water Director, Chris Budak, to help answer that question. We have discussed the timing and the phasing, but that specific question about whether the contract allows for that, I'll allow Ms. Budak to speak to that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the agreement is outlined to basically evaluate Plant 2, Plant 3, and then, uh, future growth, how we, how we're going to address that. Um, with Plant 2 specifically is, is really the area that we're focusing on for, um, a replacement or a rebuild. Um, and we are evaluating it to determine what part of our infrastructure is still viable and what part of the infrastructure needs to be replaced. So, I think as we go through the effort, we can look at seeing what things we can phase, how we can keep it operational, and try and phase some of the bigger parts. Um, the goal right now is to start construction, uh, in, uh, 2032, 33 timeframe, by the time we get, you know, um, evaluation, design, permits done. Uh, so we'll, we will evaluate as we're doing it to see if there's things that we can phase over maybe a couple of years instead of all at once having all the money up front. And, um, we are still evaluating the cost of service and the, you know, the options for rate increases, and we'll see how we can do with collecting funds so we can reduce the bonding as much as possible.
Right. I appreciate that. You know, I mean, we've, we've patched it for a long time, and if we can patch it for another couple of years, it can save substantial money.
Okay. We'll consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll move to approve.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Smith, 7E8.
Thank you. This is the agreement with, um, ASM Global and AEG who manage the arena, and I would just like to move to continue this item. It talks about a 50% split after the net operating income, but the, I really don't have a clear picture of how that's defined and what our responsibilities are and their responsibilities. So, I would just move to continue this item.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez, did you?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I will, um, I will second, uh, Councilmember Smith's referral or request to, um, continue this item. Uh, you know, the, the arena and theater is in Ward 2, and I've spent a lot of time with arena staff and with our, our city management staff to discuss what this agreement may look like. And also, it should be noted that the city has provided many capital improvement projects for the arena over the last few years, and, um, I'm very proud that the arena is actually turning a profit. Uh, we've generated multi-millions of dollars, uh, as a result of several successful years, and that, that has never been the case in the history of the arena. So, that is, that's good news for Bakersfield. Those are dollars that are coming to the city of Bakersfield for, for other capital projects. Uh, but as we take a look at this agreement, I, I do want to spend a little bit more time on it. I, I do believe that since it is the city's responsibility for maintenance of the, of the building, that perhaps, uh, we should get a larger share of, of the net proceeds. And so, um, I'd like to continue to work with staff on this as well. So, thank you, Councilmember Smith, for, for raising this issue.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Consent calendar public hearing items 8A and 8B for approval. Uh, two staff memorandums were provided regarding item 8B, transmitting correspondence.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing items 8A and B. Is there anyone in the audience?
Excuse me, Mayor. I had a request.
Okay. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I need to recuse myself from item 8A, and I think I need to do it up front.
Uh, yes, please, and go ahead.
And so, uh, I will recuse myself from item 8A. If they're all voted on at one time, then my vote is only for 8B as a family member is involved in that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. At this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing items 8A, B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? So, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, testimony only to remove the matter from consent calendar hearings.
Mayor Go, I did want to announce that we received several speaker cards for individuals requesting the item be pulled for discussion.
All right. Thank you. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearings? Right? So, both of them? Uh, so at this time, consent calendar hearing will be moved to the regular hearing items portion of the agenda, and the consent calendar hearing, let's see, I'm sorry, will move to the regular portion of the agenda. All right. Next item, please.
Mayor Go, let me clarify.
Yes.
The speaker cards we received were specifically for item 8B.
Okay. Only for 8B. And so, now, 8A.
Mayor, if you could close then the public hearing on item 8A, since no one from the public or the council wishes to pull item 8A, if you could close the hearing and return it to council for a vote, I would appreciate it.
At this time, consent calendar public hearing, item 8A is now closed, and 8B. Oh, sorry, 8A, sorry, we're moving the other one. Too much going on.
Motion to adopt 8A.
Motion? Please cast your votes.
The record should reflect that Councilmember Smith has abstained.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Smith abstaining.
Thank you. And so, 8B will move after the regular hearings. Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself and make your statements succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the mic, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly enter statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing item 9A, public hearing to consider a resolution for vesting tentative tract map 7471 phased. A staff memorandum was provided regarding this item, continuing the hearing to September 10th.
Thank you. City Manager, would you like to make any comments before I go to the next part?
No comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, at this time, public hearing items 8A is open. Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge that we received a blue memo from staff recommending that this item be continued to September 10th, 2025 to address agendizing issues. While the public can still make comments today, we encourage you to wait until the item is heard on September 10th, 2025. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation to continue the appeal hearing to September 10th, 2025? Anybody opposed to the continuance? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of the continuance of the appeal hearing? Seeing none, the appeal hearing remains open, and I'll return it to council for comment and action. To continue.
Motion to continue, item 9A.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Should we have the specific date?
9/10, September 10th.
September 10th, 2025. And you have a motion on that? To continue the appeal hearing to September 10th, 2025, please cast your votes. Okay. We're having difficulty with the technology. Can we refresh? Or go ahead and try again? Oh, she's still creating it.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, our next item will be going back to 8B. Madam Clerk, would you read that, please?
Item 8B, Downtown Revitalization Grants Agreement with Dolores C. Huerta Foundation, not to exceed $300,000 for off-site improvements. Public hearing to consider grants agreement that will outline reimbursement of costs, including costs associated with replacement of aging infrastructure, including sewer, storm drainage, streetlights, sidewalks, and installation of new landscaping for future infill development. That will consist of a new cultural center. A staff memorandum was provided regarding this item, correcting a Scrivener's error in the title.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Mayor and Council, I have some brief presentation on the nature of this item. Um, this is in support of a project, um, that includes the development of a long vacant parcel, um, in downtown that has been in a difficult-to-develop area. Um, the community, uh, center will provide educational, artistic, cultural experiences. It will have office spaces, it will have public spaces, including an amphitheater, museum, gallery, classrooms, and other public gathering spaces. I think what's probably most relevant about this is its connection and alignment with council's goals around redeveloping downtown. And we've had other projects that have had similar level of investment, in which the city has tried to participate to facilitate that level of investment. This is a $34 million investment into the downtown, 30,000 square feet. It will generate 40 full-time jobs and 150 temporary construction jobs. Similar to other projects where the city has focused on infrastructure in the downtown core, we're focusing on infrastructure here. We're not providing funding for other portions of the project. We actually knew we were going to have some undergrounding work within the streetway in this area, and so we delayed that work. We didn't want to tear up the roadway to have it torn up again, similar to the sidewalks. We didn't want to tear up sidewalks to have them torn up again. And we aligned our schedule for that in-the-street work to be aligned with when this construction project will be complete, we can do our work under the street, repave the streets. And then we're asking the developers to meet requirements around sidewalk and landscaping and curb and gutter, and the city is agreeing to reimburse a portion of those costs, again consistent with the types of infrastructure investments that we've made for similar projects in the downtown. It is on a public hearing because any assistance over $100,000 requires a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Before I open the public hearing, I want to state the time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers, therefore it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to staff's recommendation, then we'll hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. You may pose questions during your statement, but they will not be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Madam Clerk, please read the first, the public statement, while you already have. And so at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? And Madam Clerk, I think you already have some requests.
Mayor Go, the speaker cards did not indicate whether the individuals were in favor or opposed.
Okay, so at this time, I will open it for those who would like to speak in opposition. If you just come forward, one at a time, make your statement, and then we'll move on to the next. And just, if you would introduce yourself and make your statement quickly, please.
Hello, my name's Cory Hanners. I'm just a citizen of Bakersfield. Thank you so much for your time for listening. I had a big speech written down, but based on my time, I'm going to go ahead and just read past. I don't want to come and personally attack all the things that I disagree with Dolores Huerta and what she has done, but I do want to point out a few things that aren't sitting well with me. Dolores Huerta has been arrested 22 to 25 times in her activism. One particular was for blocking doors and failure to leave a protest. In her interviews, she or her group say they are willing to risk arrest for their purpose. On one news interview, she says she wants to focus on the children and train activist. So I looked up what the word activist means, and it's a person who uses or supports strong actions such as public protest in support or opposition to one side of a controversial issue. So she is organizing these children to learn this, and these huge protests with the attitude of getting arrested and going into a situation where emotions are already intense. How is this peaceful? I bring up the word peace because in the name of her center, it has the word peace in it. And the definition of peace is freedom from disturbances and a state of period where there is no war. The center she wants to start sounds like they are training children to believe a left-wing ideology and be prepared to be arrested for it. What else sticks out to me is how much money she is going to get for it. Our community is mostly conservative, and her ideology is about left-wing policies. I'm a part of a nonprofit organization that gets no help from Bakersfield City. We go out and we ask for community support. At Kern Resource Center, we don't train activists. The public school does that for us. We teach history, math, English, Spanish, PE, science, and manners, and how to treat everyone on how they'd want to be treated, no matter what their beliefs are, or what their skin color is, or how they vote. Dolores said in one interview, "We need to help people that look like her," and she tapped her shoulders. And in the next sentence, she says, "She wants to get rid of the word 'race,'" which is Dolores. I think she had good intentions in the beginning of her fight, but she has left her values, and money has gotten the worst of her. I urge you to vote no. And another thing I just heard him say is $100,000. You don't need a public thing, so if you want to give her $100,000 and Kern Resource Center $100,000, you'd be giving a liberal, a conservative nonprofit, and then you can give the rest to the mission, who feeds the ones who are struggling from all of the effects of all this political nonsense.
Thank you, next speaker, please. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Jeff Sanders. I'm here to oppose the $300,000. I think there's many other ways to spend that. I honestly believe she was right on track there. There's a lot of protest out there to bring in illegals and have open borders. We have housing problems that they brought up through this Mercy House. Why do we want to bring in more homeless and have her advocate for homeless and non-citizens? You are here to represent citizens, not non-citizens. Immigrants are people that come here legally. Non-citizens or illegal aliens are breaking the law. This center encourages, in fact, some of her representatives were arrested down south during some of the raids on non-citizens or illegal aliens. I don't think we need to support that. I think you're better off supporting our homeless, our, what was it, 800 homes you put out? You think that $300,000 might help another 800 people to put in homes? 800 American citizens? I think, I'm against this, and I think you should put your money towards American citizens rather than non-Americans.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
My name is Terry Maxwell. You know, it should be the tradition of a city council to not embroil themselves into controversial subjects like this. You're really giving money to an association that does have a political agenda. Now you say, "Well, no, no, we're just helping them with the building. We need to improve that area." Well, I'm sorry, I owned a restaurant down here for 18 and a half years. I couldn't get the city council to move at all just to repave my alley. You know, you can't pick and choose the way that you guys are picking and choosing. And if you are going to pick and choose, you have to be careful about who you're picking to choose and choosing to help. And as the last speaker just said, well, are you going to give $300,000 to now a more conservative alignment? Are you going to open that Pandora's Box? I don't think you should. Now, there's a couple of people on this council that understands fungibility of money, that if you're not going to require them to do all these things like you require so many others, do you remember when you went ahead and said, "Let's make breweries, and we can make a liquor downtown? We're going to make it real easy?" I know somebody who tried to do that, and they abandoned it because when they started talking to the city about what they'd have to do to redo their building and to make it so that they could use the sewer system, they were talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars that they were going to have to spend. The city wasn't going to help them on that. So now you're going to help them. You helped Wall Street Alley, helped only those businesses. You didn't go to every alley and help every business. I thought we were done with that. Dolores Huerta Foundation has got the money, the resources, to do all of this on their own. Help the businesses that don't have a political agenda that they're working on day in and day out, and I think that you would probably be well-served to avoid this. It's something that people are going to be able to point to and say, "There they go. They're putting their finger on the scale, and they're helping one group when they won't help anybody else."
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Councilman Pastor Angelo Frazier. I think of the EV mandates that were pushed on us for a long, long time, basically saying, "We're going to make you buy these cars." And now we're finding out that that is not a good business practice. $300,000, taxpayer money, going to an activist organization. Why not fix the potholes? Why not fix the sewers? Why not continue the great work with the homeless? I think if this is approved, this will not make Bakersfield great again. This will send us down the road to activism, and it won't look good in history. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, city council and Mayor Go. My name's Ladonna Dodge, and I'm a citizen in Bakersfield. I have listened to all the speakers. However, my issue is, where is this funding coming from? Where are you getting the $300,000? It's my understanding it's coming from the Measure Inn. That was for police. That's not for the Dolores Huerta Foundation. And has this gone before the Measure Inn committee? It's my understanding it has not. And if it has not, why is it on your agenda? That's what I would really like to know. $300,000. I got the letter that said, "You're raising my sewer fees." I got the letter that said, "The water's going up." Every person in this city has increased expenses, and you're taking $300,000 and giving it to an organization that does not support the citizens of the city. We are citizens here, we are paying the taxes here, and if that money was allocated for police, then give it to the police. Stop this garbage of handing it out to people that don't deserve it. They don't deserve the grant. There is nothing about it. They have the money, they can do it themselves. If they want to build their building, let them build it. If I wanted to build a building, are you guys going to fund it? The answer is no, absolutely not. I disagree with this 100%. I disagree with you guys taking money out of Measure Inn committee that is supposed to be for our safety and for police and doing this stuff with it. Think about what you're doing before you do it. All this is going to do is cause lawsuits, and it should. You should be sued if this is what you're doing, giving away our money to people that don't deserve it, that have the cash in their bank account to do it themselves. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, next speaker, please. Are there any others who wish to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, are there any who wish to speak in support and favor of staff's recommendation? If you would just come forward one at a time, please. Introduce yourself.
I'm assuming that it's the rest of the cards then that I have, so Madam Clerk, if you want to call. There are no signs, I'm sorry. There are no signs in the council chamber.
These are elevations, but that's fine. I was asked to bring in my staffs.
Madam City Attorney? No signs.
Okay. May I proceed, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers.
Not even from the applicant. In past, when the applicant has been on the agenda, they've been allowed to provide.
I would agree with you, Councilmember Gonzalez, but they're not an applicant.
They're the applicant for the grant. Mr. Huerta is the--
City manager and I agree that they're not an applicant. The city is giving them the, giving them the, giving them the grant. We are aligned.
Mr. Huerta, go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Emilio Huerta. I am general counsel, and I'm also the project manager for the Dolores Huerta Peace and Justice Cultural Center. We are really excited about this project. We're really excited about bringing this project to downtown Bakersfield. We've been working on this project for more than five years, and it's correct, as you have heard, we have raised quite a bit of money for this project. Our original design for this project was to actually develop the entire block from 8th Street to I, from 21st to 22nd. When we found out that the cost was prohibitive, we went ahead and downscaled our project so that it is the eastern portion from the alley on 21st over to I Street. The building will be a 30,000-square-foot building that will house 40 full-time employees and about 20 part-time employees in downtown Bakersfield. People who spend and who will be in downtown Bakersfield, without a doubt, this project will be an injection of cash and financial, finance here to downtown Bakersfield. The center will enable our staff and the community to take advantage of a 200-person multipurpose room, three boardrooms, a courtyard, a youth center, a youth podcast studio, and an art gallery. All of this will be designed to be open to the community. The farmworker movement, and my mother Dolores and Cesar Chavez have a long history in this county. And, you know, in Delano, we have the Forty Acres, and we have the Filipino Hall, which is visited yearly by many, many people from outside of our county. East of here, we have the National Chavez Center in King, where Caesar Chavez is buried and his wife Helen, who receive more than 100,000 guests every year at that center. There is nothing here in Kern County that pays tribute to the immigrants and to the farmworkers and to the farmworker movement. You know, the agricultural community in our state was built upon the backs of immigrants, and our center was designed to honor all of those immigrants from all ethnic backgrounds, Native Americans, Okis, African Americans, and of course, our Braceros. The Cultural Center will be a draw, and I'm already receiving calls from out-of-town visitors to come and see the center, even though it is not built. A grant from this, from city council will help offset construction costs. As I stand here before you today, we've started construction in July. We've already encountered three underground storage tanks. We've encountered three large cement vats. We've encountered an abandoned well. The cost to remedy that and to remove those items within our property is going to cost more than $300,000. It is difficult for a developer to build, and I'm sure Councilmember Smith knows this, it's difficult to build in downtown Bakersfield and to take a 100-year-old site that has been abandoned and bring in an infill project. Yet we have nonetheless, with my 30 years of real estate development history, have come in and we designed a beautiful building, and that's what these cards would have shown. So our, our project, without a doubt, as has been mentioned, addresses the downtown revitalization incentive program to address infrastructure, as I just pointed out. I also want to share with you that we have received large basis of community support for this project, and I want to ask those people here in the audience with you this evening, those folks that are in support of our project, to please stand up. Please stand. And that just gives you an idea of the amount of the support from residents of the city of Bakersfield. My own family has been a resident here of the city of Bakersfield for many a long time.
Would you just go ahead and sit down at this point? Go ahead, Mr. Huerta.
So I want to thank city staff, I want to thank Councilmember Gonzalez, and I want to thank those of folks who brought the idea of the revitalization program to my attention. It was not something that we had initially thought of, but it only makes sense that we invest in the brick-and-mortar aspects of our project and incorporate the theme of our building with the other themes that are taking place here in downtown Bakersfield. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And for safety reasons, I'm going to ask you, we're going to just alternate, going back, but I'm going to ask you to sit down. Would you ask the person's name in front of you if you don't know it, and then just, we'll ask the rest of you to sit down, and then just come up as, so just find out who's in front. And yeah, just go ahead and sit down, and then we'll have you come up. Ms. Huerta, you'll be next, and then on this side, you'll be next. Yes, and I'm going to ask you not to talk while others are speaking, please. Just go ahead and sit down for safety reasons, and you'll find out who the next person is. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor Go, city council members. My name is Dolores Huerta, and I am a resident of Bakersfield. And I just want to say-- And I just want to say that this building is going to be a great asset to Bakersfield. Right now, if you go by that area, if you wouldn't be by that area before, it was an eyesore. It was an empty lot. There were a lot of homeless people that were hanging out there. And so this is really going to be helping the city of Bakersfield. And I just want to say to everybody, there is not one dollar, not one dollar that is coming to the programs of the Dolores Huerta Foundation, okay? Not one dollar. Not that we're not proud of our programs, you know? And I'm not going to give you, I could give you a whole litany of the work that we've done here in Bakersfield and Kern County. I mean, we vaccinated 12,000 people against COVID. You know, we kept people safe. We actually signed up tens of thousands of people for the census so that we could get money to come into Kern County and to Bakersfield for the programs that we need, you know? So we are an asset to the county and we're very proud of the work that we've done. But again, I want to repeat, not one dollar of this money is going for our programs, all right? And also, not one dollar of this money is going to myself. Yes, it's true, I've had over 20 arrests for civil disobedience. And because of the work that I've done, I don't take any money from the foundation either. I am a full-time volunteer as the president of the Dolores Huerta Foundation. How do I live? Well, I live on the money that I get from a beating that I received in San Francisco from the police when we were protesting against a then candidate for President George Bush because he said there was nothing wrong with pesticides. We know pesticides kill many, many people, especially farmworkers, okay? So this is what I get. I get $2,000 a month from the city of San Francisco plus my social security. Yeah, this is how I live, okay? Do I say, do I fight against racism? Yes, I do. Martin Luther King said that racism is an illness that we have in our society. And I'd like to say, and those of you that have heard me speak, have heard me say this, we are one human race. And our human race came from Africa. And so we can say to the neo-Nazis out there, to the white supremacists out there, get over it, you're Africans, okay? Just get over it, you're Africans, all right? We are one human race and we have to stand together and we have to stand for justice and for progress, and we can do that. And the Peace and Justice Cultural Center will be an asset and will help achieve our goals so that we can be again united and to save our democracy. Si, se puede. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, I know you're passionate about it, but just please observe the protocols. The next person on this side, and then it will be the next person who was after Ms. Huerta. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Sophia Garcia. I'm here representing myself. One thing I also wanted to note was I'd love for the board to consider changing your amendment of only 15 minutes for public comment. I've done, I've been in public meetings where public comment lasts seven hours, five hours. And I think here as residents, the city as council really should be able to hear everyone who stood in line. I really don't, you're not going to be able to get through everyone who stood up. So I just wanted to say that separately. And again, I'm here on my own, not representing anybody. I have worked in the city downtown Bakersfield for over six years. I worked for the Kern County Public Works Department. I worked for the Dolores Huerta Foundation. And I've seen businesses come and go. I've seen businesses where stores are broken into and they leave. I've seen our farmer's market leave. We do not have a farmer's market on the east side of town. And so I think having this funding and having the city invest in a revitalization of an empty lot in the city of downtown Bakersfield is a wonderful idea, not just because of all the work that the foundation does and staff does, but also because it's going to bring in business, it's going to bring in economic development to your city. And the work that I do, I've visited cities all across the country and I love walking downtowns. I love seeing small businesses. And I really think that you guys should consider with your recommendation of putting that funding in. I also did want to note too that the foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. As the one who used to work for them, and I've done redistricting work, last time actually I was here was for the city of Bakersfield redistricting, that the work that they do is to really empower residents and actually empower residents to do what we're doing here right now, to come to a board meeting and to speak to all of you. I think one of the biggest lessons that I learned and continue in all the work that I do moving forward is that it is our right as citizens and residents to be here in front of you. And that's a big thing that the foundation does, was empower people, whether you speak another language besides English, to really come here. So thank you for your time. And again, I'd love you to reconsider that 30-minute portion. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the next speaker speaks, I just want to make sure, colleagues, that no one needs a break because you have to listen to the entire public hearing to vote. Just want to confirm. Madam City Attorney, there's just some question about whether Councilmember Weir will be able to vote, and would you go ahead and clear that for us?
I would need to talk to Councilmember Weir. I believe that there's a microphone in the back and I believe that he can hear everything. But I would suggest that we take a small break until he gets back.
All right. Let's, Ms. Borrow, you'll be next, and thank you. So right now, colleagues, unless you really need to leave, let's just take a very small break until he returns. It's time for us to start. Would you please take your seats? Thank you for being respectful of the council chambers. I know that there's a lot of passion about these issues and there's a lot of conversation that could go on, but we'll ask you to make sure that you give the speaker the opportunity to speak. So I know we're running short on time, and this is what I'm going to do after I make one clarification. So the question that came up before was that we had a council member leave during the public hearing, and we want to make sure that whenever we have a public hearing that we hear all the speakers. Let the record reflect, though, that Councilmember Weir was able to hear the prior speaker, so we will proceed. And now, I know that we're running short on time, and what I'm going to do is, at the request of council, I'm going to extend the speaking time for those in opposition for five minutes and the same thing for those in favor by five minutes. But I would suggest, because there are a lot of people who want to speak, that you keep your remarks as brief and concise as possible. If it's already been said prior to that, there's no need to repeat. Ms. Borrow, go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Go. It's an honor to be here. Long time no see, some of you. My name is Mary Helen Borrow. I live at 201 Jefferson Street, Bakersfield. Been here for about 45 years, so I'm a little bit of a newcomer to some of you. But I am so proud and love this community. I, for many years, was the owner and operator of Borrow Broadcasting Corporation, operated radio stations and a newspaper in both English and Spanish. This is a wonderful, growing, multicultural community. I know a few people have expressed concern about their tax dollars going to help brown people in Bakersfield and people that disagree with them politically. Please keep in mind, those of you who don't know, that since the, I think it was the late 70s or 80s, 1980s, over 60% of the taxpayers in the greater Bakersfield area have been Latinos. So don't worry about the wrong tax dollars going for the wrong projects. We got you covered. And we've got this wonderful project to support. It is a beautiful building. I was part of the DBA for years. We were crying for gorgeous construction like this to infill our downtown area. A beautiful building that's going to also serve as a community center with a meeting place, services. It's going to be such an asset. And it's going to raise the value, the real estate value of all the surrounding area. Hey, I'll bet you neighboring towns that give their eye teeth to have this kind of a development in their town. It's wonderful. And the services that are going to be provided to our community, the greater community, by this wonderful organization are going to be such an asset to all of us. And I hope you will vote to support this project. $300,000 is peanuts, man. We're talking mega bucks that the Dolores Huerta Foundation, the Latino community, and all of us have and will continue proudly and happily and lovingly to give to the greater Bakersfield area. Thank you so much, and I hope you'll vote yes.
Thank you, next speaker, please. And just so you're conscious of time, we have a minute and 49 seconds left. I've added five to this, and so I just ask you to be concise, please. Add five, and that'll be it. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hello, good evening, council members and staff. My name is George Torres. I'm here representing over 1,000 carpenters in the Kern County area. We stand in support of Item 8B and the Downtown Revitalization Grant Agreement. The developer has made a commitment to build this project in a responsible manner by building this project with a skilled workforce, mortgage-paying jobs, and the employment of local Kern High School District ROC program graduates. So for these reasons, the carpenters request that the council consider approval of Item 8B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. The next person who is on this side. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
My name is Jesus Garcia. I'm a community, longtime community member. Fix the potholes. Fix the sewers. Fix the streets. Fix the sidewalks. That's what we're demanding occur here. I'm an urban planner and a GIS expert, and one of the favorite sessions I ever went at one of the conferences was a session on sidewalks, on sewers, on infrastructure. That is the role of you as a city council to take care of. The Dolores Huerta Foundation has brought in $35 million to the pot. $35 million. This contribution of the responsibilities that are yours as a city council to fix the sidewalks, to fix the sewers, to fix the drainage ranges is 0.87%. That's a 99% to 1% return. I think that's pretty good for you folks. And what we're requesting is that you do your job of revitalizing Bakersfield. This center is going to have hundreds of visitors coming through every day. So think of Diagny's, think of Padre, think of, think of the Mint, think of, you know, the Allicad. Think of all the restaurants that are going to be refurbished and are going to be gaining monies coming in. We've done a great job with some of the portions over on 18th Street, Andre, wonderful, wonderful job on all the things that are happening there. That's what we're requesting for Bakersfield, is to continue this job, continue it with money. You talk about bootstraps, you talk about pulling up by your own straps. Dolores Huerta has brought in $35 million. That's $35 million worth of bootstraps. All we're asking is for 0.87% to finish the job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we'll have the next person who is on this side, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Micah Tapia. I'm part of this community, even though people who think immigrants are not. I am an immigrant, very proudly, and I've worked for this community since a few years ago, just fighting for health for all. That means white, brown, any color, right? Health for all. And I'm here to support the Dolores Huerta project. I don't see right hand, left hand. I see open mind and awakeness of the conscience of human being. Because if we don't deserve this education in the schools, we can have education out of the schools about who we are, why we are here. We have, we have a leadership here that is showing us the path for seeing everybody the same. And we are not listening the truth and Jesus speaking the truth. And the people who is with her is speaking the truth for everyone. So I'm here to support her and her project. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on this side, please.
Hello, my name is Alicia Quintana. I was born and raised in Delano, California. I am an American citizen, and I'm here on behalf of the Dolores Huerta Center. We ask that this center is going to bring in so much tourism, so much money to Bakersfield. And the opposing people should know that. It's going to bring down so much business to downtown, to the Padre, to all our restaurants, all our bars downtown. And people come from all over the world just to come to see Dolores. So you guys think about that and the money that's going to be coming in and the tourism. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker on this side, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeremiah Sotzwaraka, member in Ward 4, Bob Smith. And I'm here to vocalize my support of these funds. I think there are a few things that make a city great. One of those things I feel like that could be great for Bakersfield is this Peace and Cultural Justice Center. Now, mind you, this fund is funding what already the city already wants to invest in, downtown revitalization, sidewalks. But also, I think it's connected to a larger issue of the way that we want to envision our city, not just for people who are stuck in the past 100 years, but looking forward to the next 100 years. And that includes a network of educators that I represent. That is my field. I have friends in K-12. I have people that I work with at CSEB and higher education. And I can tell you that white, Asian, Pacific Islander, Black, Native students and their families would be grateful to see that this project becomes, you know, into fruition. So just here to vocalize the support and hope that you invest in the future of our city and not just get stuck in the past.
Now we'll have the next speaker on this side. Was that you?
It is, absolutely. Yes, I came up to her. Thank you.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Audrey Chavez, she/her/ea, and I am a downtown business owner. And I want to say thank you to all of you for all of the downtown revitalization that you've been doing for quite some time. We really appreciate the lighting, the streets, the landscaping, and also the extra security. I know that you carry a lot on your shoulders. But as a small business and a woman who is involved in our community, I want to say thank you. I don't think you get to hear that often enough. And I also would like to say, I am not paid to speak. I feel honored to speak. I feel blessed to speak. I don't know if you guys recognize this, but this is 8B. This is a public hearing to consider a grant agreement that will outline reimbursement of costs that include costs associated with replacement of aging infrastructure that includes sewer, storm drainage, streetlights, sidewalks, and installation of new landscaping for future infill development. How beautiful that we have the opportunity today for an icon to have this center being built to promote love and justice and peace. How beautiful that I am alive to see this and to know that it will be here for future generations. I heard some comments earlier and it made me emotional. I want you to know that Dolores received the Presidential Medal of Freedom in 2012 from our president. One of the highest civilian honors in the United States.
Ms. Chavez, we have concluded that you can, if you just bring your comments to a close.
I am bringing it to a close. I want to say that because I would be offended if when Martin's Meets was being spoken about, there were so many personal comments. This is a win-win. This is an honor. And as a downtown business owner and a constituent, I'm so thankful to have this happen. Thank you for this agreement.
Thank you.
Bless you, Dolores. Bless you, Dolores.
Audience, I have already extended the time by five minutes, which we typically don't do for something like this. And so in all fairness, I know that earlier Mr. Huerta asked for a show of hands, so I think our council has seen those who are in support of the project. So in all fairness, I'm going to extend, give five minutes to those in opposition, if anybody wishes to speak in opposition. Who has not already spoken, I'm sorry. Yeah. Who?
Who has not already spoken?
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak first, who has not already spoken? All right, he's, it's okay. Yeah. No, we're gonna get there.
Morning, City Council, or good afternoon. My name's Charles Shin. I think if we have three hundred thousand dollars to spend on something for the, support the city, support the community, support everybody, and I don't think anybody said anything about brown people, I think we need to fix our, what is it, number two sewer plant, the infrastructure. The concrete's falling apart. The rebar is rusting. That's going to affect the whole, well, it's going to affect a great portion of the city. So if we have three hundred thousand dollars sitting in a bank somewhere, we need to spend it on something that's going to make the city function a little bit better, looking for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker, who wishes to speak in support?
Support? No.
Sorry, in opposition. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in opposition? In the back, come on forward. Mr. Maxwell, let's go ahead and give people an opportunity who haven't yet spoken. Okay, thank you. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, council members. I'm Deborah Busby. I'm part of Ward Four, and I am in opposition to this project, not because I do not believe that it's a great project, as everybody has said, but because I don't feel that taxpayer dollars should be used. I was here two months ago opposing the increase in the sewer, and now we have three hundred thousand dollars to give to a charity. There are a lot of good charities in our community. All the animal people were here. I just think that if this is a great foundation, they have their place in Delano, they have their place in Keene, they received, to my understanding, twenty-two million dollars from the state. I don't think that our tax dollars should go to this project when there are so many other things that our city can do that need to be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak in opposition? Go ahead, and you can use the rest of the time or whatever time. And then just for clarification, Mr. Maxwell, before you start, there's also going to be an opportunity for rebuttal. So there's five minutes for rebuttal in opposition and five minutes rebuttal in support.
Oh, okay, then.
So if you'd like to do the rebuttal, okay? So at this point, is there anybody else who would like to speak in support, in opposition? In opposition, please. Please come forward, who hasn't yet spoken. All right. Oh, then please go ahead and sit down. All right. So seeing none, now we go back to the, we've extended the time, and now we go back to the normal hearing, in which case there will be five-minute rebuttal in opposition to staff's recommendation and a five-minute rebuttal in support, all right? So each side will get another five minutes. So at this point, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Please come forward. And I think, Mr. Maxwell, why don't you come first? I know this is very confusing. Thank you all for your patience and for being here. Mr. Maxwell, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to point out a couple of things. First of all, one person does not represent a whole group of people, and it really upsets me when somebody has the expectation that they speak for a large group of people. I have plenty of people who are brown, Hispanic, Black, White, Oriental, and each one of them has a different viewpoint on different subjects. So to think that it's a monolithic idea that all Hispanics support Dolores Huerta, I think is a fallacy. And you have to, again, go back to think in terms of what are you doing here? The last speaker really said it the best. You know, this is an organization that can afford to do this on their own. When Chan and Com redid that building on the corner of Chester and Eighteenth, they spent their own money. When those people who bought that restaurant, it was on the corner of Eighteenth and Chester, catty corner across the street, and realized that underneath was a facade for the, I believe it was the First Trust, they spent their own money. They spent a ton of money on that. City didn't help them on it. Now, it benefited certainly everybody downtown because it recreated more money, more interest in people coming downtown and doing that. You have thousands, tens of thousands of people that work downtown every day. To think that this is going to be an economic boon for you because a few hundred people are going to come through that, even if it's every day, how many of those people have done the research? Do you know how many people are actually going to stay and go eat someplace? I was in the restaurant industry for eighteen and a half years. I can guarantee you that very few of them will. A lot of them will come, they'll look at what they wanted to look at, they'll get in their cars and go right back where they were. That's the reality, guys. Well, I don't know where you work, but...
That is not...
That's where I did. That's where I did. So again, I urge you to not give this money to a group of people that really don't need it, that they can afford this on their own. Thank you.
Next speaker, rebutting.
Yeah, Pastor Angelo. I came to this city over 30 years ago. I am sick and tired of hearing this race thing. This always seems to go back to race. We are Americans, built an American center downtown. This is about finance. My understanding, the city is broke or near broke. This isn't about tourism. This is about sustaining our city. We have some basic things. Friends of mine got those sewer things that were, they were blown out of mind. How can I pay this? Oh, then why don't we just tell them we're going to make a center downtown, and tourists will be, you know, come in. The heck with your sewer. We need to get back to the basics. This money was used, should be used for the infrastructure of the city and get off this race plantation stuff. I am sick of hearing it. It is not who we are. Let's talk about being Americans. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in rebuttal? Please introduce yourself.
Jesse Sanders. First of all, I think we're all Americans, and we're not standing here for one group or the other, but we are standing here for maintaining 250 years of sovereign borders. So that I need to get out of the way. The other thing is, when I looked at a piece of property and then found out from the city what it was going to cost me for curb and gutter just on this little corner, it was almost more than the property. I couldn't afford it. Nobody here volunteered a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for curb and gutter on this one corner. It's taxpayer money, and all the improvements on a vacant lot or any other lot goes to the developer. And if they have an empty tank, an unforeseen problem, that's on them. That's on their insurance. It's not on us, the taxpayer. We need to take care of our veterans, get our sewers fixed, get our roads fixed, get some more cops out there, for God's sakes. I can't move down the street without having somebody almost run over me with a cell phone in their hand in their car. Use that money for what it was meant for. We're in a hole already. Why spend it like this? Let them do their business and let them pay for it.
You have seven seconds.
And put Cory Hanners. And please just remember, Kern Resource Center, we would love for you guys just to look back at our permits. We've been waiting, I think, for three years to get those approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And now is the opportunity for a rebuttal for those who are in support of staff's recommendation. I'll be five minutes, and I'll ask you to use your time efficiently. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hertz Ramirez, Business Manager of Launa. We own the building, Catty Corner, to the future Dolores Huerta Peace and Justice Center. And, you know, for us, the only thing that we see is that this creates jobs, good-paying jobs, for a lot of, you know, good kids that are trying to make a way in the construction industry. So we're in full support of the Dolores Huerta Peace and Justice Center and getting the money allocated to the infrastructure.
Thank you. Anyone else rebutting in support?
Good evening. My name is Jessica, and I am the Student Success Program Coordinator at the Dolores Huerta Foundation. A lot of my work focuses on encouraging local students to attend college. We have taken over 100 students to simply attend campuses for our new program in the youth department at the Dolores Huerta Foundation. I have personally mentored over 100 youth to guide them with like financial aid, workshops, and all of that. And I think that if you approve this grant, this would further support that work. And that's pretty much all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to rebut? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, Azus Garcia. I'll be real quick. It's great to see all this discussion about infrastructure. I mean, I love it as an urban planner. That's my favorite thing. Remember, your job and the city council is to take care of the infrastructure, the sewers, the lines. I mean, you know, we keep going back to that. And this project not only will revitalize downtown, as many have said, as your own staff have said, but it's going to bring in tourism. It's going to bring in tourism internationally. So, you know, those 30 people that are not going to come and drive from, you know, New York to come and go back, they're going to come back and they're going to spend money. So it's about infrastructure, it's about money, it's about financing, it's about fixing downtown the way it should be. It's about planning for the future, not 100 years in the past, as the other speaker said.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to rebut? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Distinguished council members, Trico Matthews, Senior Pastor of Church of God, State Commission. I'll just make this clear. It's about an investment. If you had an opportunity to invest in any project to bless the city of Bakersfield, this would far and away be your best investment the entire year. I don't know what the math is on that, but it's like a 10,000 return on investment or more. And because it is a rebuttal, I do have to speak to the person who spoke about her arrest. Well, I know several other folks who were arrested unjustly in their lives. MLK, John Lewis, our founding forefathers, the Boston Tea Party, and even Jesus Christ, my Lord and Savior. So I will never be ashamed to be associated with people, you don't have to clap, thank you. I will never be ashamed to be associated with people who are willing to sacrifice, put themselves on the line for what they believe and know is right. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you so much. Gabriel Garcia here. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. And I just wanted to talk, representing the youth in the organization. I think that earlier, the woman who spoke very emotionally about the foundation teaching bad manners to our youth, I think that's very easy to talk about, youth you have never met, but if you actually knew our youth, you'd understand that they are seeking peace and they are trying to fight for justice. We were camping recently, and around the campfire, they decided to tell scary stories which were all about our current administration. And we had chills down our spines because they were talking about what they were seeing on their video, the videos on their phones, and it's all because of our current administration. What we're doing in this foundation is empowering communities, empowering youth, and they go get people to vote for good people. And I think that the people who are opposed to us are afraid of that. I feel like if this was an ask for 100,000 or more money for a detention center, they'd be asking you guys to support that here in Bakersfield, but we're asking for a cultural peace center who is, that is going to do that. It's going to get the community united. We need this. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And that ends our five-minute rebuttal. At this time, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for being here this evening and for your comments. I really appreciate it. I'm going to speak from my perspective as the downtown councilman representing downtown for eight and a half years. I have worked with my council colleagues, with city staff, with downtown business owners, with developers, with property owners, with caring community members for eight and a half years to revitalize downtown Bakersfield. We've fixed many, many potholes. We repaved dozens of streets and alleys. Mr. Maxwell, you were on the city council. I'm not sure why you weren't able to get your alley repaved, but we've repaved several alleys over the years. We've actually invested millions of dollars of replacing sewer lines, aging sewer lines in downtown Bakersfield over the years. We've worked systematically, strategically, trying to revitalize our downtown core. We've also worked to address many of the vacant buildings and empty lots in downtown Bakersfield, which have become attractive nuisances and really have been an anchor bringing down, I should say, an anvil, bringing down our downtown revitalization movement. And we worked on various different measures to help address those vacant lots and those empty buildings. This particular property has been a longstanding vacant parcel, as was stated by Mr. Clegg. And we should note that it is very expensive, very expensive, to invest and develop in downtown Bakersfield, far more expensive than it is to do a greenfield development out in the Southwest. And frankly, the Dolores Huerta Foundation and the Peace and Justice Center could have easily have chosen a site anywhere in the state of California, anywhere in Kern County, anywhere in Bakersfield, and have done it at a far reduced rate price. And the reason why they chose downtown Bakersfield is because of their heart and their commitment for our community and for the downtown core, like so many of us who care so much about downtown Bakersfield. They were intentional about being here in downtown Bakersfield, and I, as the downtown councilman, welcome them. It was stated that we are picking and choosing who gets grants and who does not. Let me just state some facts. We had an apartment project with whom we partnered, and we coordinated the timing of city infrastructure for stormwater and street repaving to match their construction timeline. Woolworths came back, and they are upgrading that facility. We provided a $248,000 facade improvement grant. Bakersfield Memorial Hospital on 34th Street received a $151,000 grant to repave their sidewalks. Jin Sushi received a $151,000 grant to improve and upgrade their outdoor sidewalk dining areas. There is a group on 19th Street that owns a property that received a half a million dollars for a large facade project, and millions for the complete streets project that we're doing on 18th and 19th Street. Another project on 19th Street that received $774,000 for a large facade project, and again, will benefit from a multimillion-dollar investment we're making on 18th and 19th Street. And yet another development on Wall Street and 19th Street that's receiving a $123,000 large facade project, and I can go on. Strong Realty received a $223,000 EOA grant. DV Therapy received $99,000. First Union Community Church received $99,000. Amistoy Hotel received $170,000. Pacific Tire &amp; Steel received $114,000. The Arts Council of Kern County received $116,000. The Gentleman received $93,000. Cask Strength received $99,000. The Garden Church received $99,000. Kern Town Motel received $90,000. Flourishing Art received $99,000. And BB&amp;A Construction received $99,000. And isn't it funny that after all these grants that we approved over the years, nobody who came to spoken opposition to this project spoke in opposition to any of those? Which makes me think that it has very little to do with the actual amount of money, and something to do with something else. And so that is very, very concerning to me. And I want to bring us back, though, to the whole point, the whole point of this expenditure. And I want to bring us back, though, to the whole point, the whole point of this expenditure. It's to help continue incentivize downtown Bakersfield. And as the councilman of this area, as someone who's been very, very strong and advocating for this downtown, we are better, we are stronger, we are more interesting, we will be more successful when we are more diverse, when we're more inclusive. And we have lots of different things in our downtown core. This is the one neighborhood in all of the city that should be the most multicultural, the most accepting, and have all these wonderful different amenities. And it is the perfect match to have the Delores Huerta Peace and Justice Cultural Center in downtown Bakersfield. My final point is that there's a lot of talk about fixing sidewalks, fixing streets. This grant actually just does all that. It's a $300,000 reimbursement grant that pays for all of this public infrastructure. That's it. So, with that, I'm going to make a motion that this council approve the grant agreement for $300,000 for the Delores Huerta Peace and Justice Center.
Thank you. Councilmember Coleman, are you having problems pressing your? Okay. Do we need a minute for tech services to? Okay. We'll just hold for a minute. Okay. So, go ahead. Councilmember Beshear Tosh.
I would just, can I ask questions, too? This is question in action. Mr. Huerta, can you please come forward? I just have a few questions for you. It's just one question, actually. This has become just an emotionally charged room, and I just want to dial it back to, you know, a few basic things. If you don't get this $300,000 grant, would this shut the project completely down and stop it?
No, it won't. But as the project continues, and as I already mentioned, we are encountering unforeseen events, and those translate into change order and added costs. Just as in this grant, which has contingency, we have contingency in the project. We anticipate at some point that that contingency, of course, would be exhausted. And so, this grant, again, addresses those matters and those issues that should have already been addressed by the city. The city has a revitalization incentive program, but the way that it's structured, I can't access those funds until we've actually completed the project. Again, it's a reimbursement grant. In addition to that, we've already posted a $300,000 cash bond for the sake of a street closure permit. So, there are costs that aren't necessarily going towards construction, but nonetheless, I need to pay for in order to keep the project moving. So, the answer is no, the project will not shut down, but we may not be able to have the exterior design, the mural artwork that we are going to display on the exterior building sort of sync with the other aesthetic themes that the city has already incorporated into downtown. And that's one of the things that we want to do, is we want to make the outside of our building coordinate with the I Street corridor that's already going down. If I could come here to the city and make two requests, one would be that the incentive program should be an upfront sort of capitalization program that incentivizes developers, because it is, as Councilmember Gonzalez mentioned, it is very expensive for developers to come to downtown Bakersfield. And there is little to no incentive for that to happen if I have to wait until the project is over three years down the road or two years down the road in our sake to get reimbursed. So, I'm out of pocket for those two years until this money comes back. Secondly, I would ask that the city council recommend or propose that I Street be one-way all the way down from 24th Street to 23rd Street all the way to 18th Street. Because to really have an I Street corridor, you sort of have it, you know, bifurcated to, it's one-way south of 21st and it's two-way north of 21st. All of this is designed to welcome pedestrians on I Street, and it's designed to incorporate what's going on with Get Across the Street. One of the reasons we chose this location is because we wanted folks that don't have transportation, who take advantage of the Get Services, to be able to come to downtown to use not only our building and our services for their events, but also other city services. And we see this as sort of a magnet for all of that activity to take place. The short answer is no. The long answer is every penny helps, okay? Because I know that there are excessive costs that are yet to come, that are unforeseen, and this is one less thing for me to worry about.
Sure. So, just to be clear, you don't need the money?
I do need the money, absolutely.
The project is going forward whether you get the grant or not?
Currently, the city is holding on to $300,000 of my money, and I'm not going to get, I'm going to have to come out of pocket and advance these costs before I get reimbursed. And when I get reimbursed, then the city will also release that $300,000. So, there's a $600,000 swing here that the city has control of.
Sure. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Thank you.
They bring up a great point. I think dilapidated infrastructure anywhere in our city where it's a sidewalk or sewers should be a priority all over the city, not just downtown Bakersfield to get fixed. The problem that I have, and I've said it, and Andre, I'm so glad that you listed all of those taxpayer-funded projects that only benefit downtown Bakersfield, that don't benefit the rest of Bakersfield. We're talking about, you know, inclusivity, only east of the 99 is a recipient of tax-dollar grant-funded programs. And in my neighborhood, where there are every color you can think of, I'm a first-generation American, son of an immigrant, we work hard, our businesses go without any help, and it's unfair to the residents of Bakersfield. It's absolutely unfair to every resident in Bakersfield to not be a recipient of a grant. If it's going to be a focused area for grant programs, there are businesses, I've brought this up, the old Cruz Rouge hush puppy on White Lane has been a dilapidated, I swore my word forever. And yes, I am city council for Bakersfield, but I represent Ward 6. And Ward 5 and Ward 4 do not get any of these, any business that wants to open is not going to get any funds or any help at all. And they don't have the money, and a grant like this would be a difference in them making it or not making it, but it's unfair. I mean, this is just, it's a matter of just not being a fair program that we have set up for our community. I don't know why we would just incentivize one area that we pick and focus and just say, hey, you know what, the rest of you that pay taxes, we don't care about you. We don't care about your business areas that are falling apart, the Ming Avenue corridor that I've brought up time and time again, that gets absolutely no love from the city, that was a paradise for every resident in Bakersfield back in the early 2000s and the 90s. It's dilapidated. It's crime-ridden. It's horrible. And we would see more businesses opening up if we took care of our infrastructure and our sidewalks and not wait for businesses to come in and, you know, ask for assistance to fix it. It should have been fixed. This should have been addressed. We have to prioritize this infrastructure before it becomes an ask. This shouldn't even be an ask. It should be an easy, and I'm glad that you're taking your money. This is America. You get to do that. You get to invest in that area and do what you want with it, and that's great. That's the American dream, whether you support it or you don't support it. You are living out the American dream of spending your money how you want to. My problem is, this is not a fair program, and it doesn't represent everybody in Bakersfield. This project will still continue to go forward. They have tens of millions of dollars. I think this project needs to be, or not the project, this grant program needs to be opened up to the rest of the city or it needs to go away. It either represents the entire community or it doesn't represent anyone. It's fair. It's just fair. That's just a matter of fairness. I mean, I learned that in kindergarten TK, it doesn't matter what grade you are. This is an unfair program. It's not fair to any other business. You listed them all, downtown, downtown, downtown. That's great. How many people in Bakersfield, Ward 5 and 6 and 4, spend a lot? I mean, there's a few, but what about those wards? We're just going to let them fall apart and then those will be our projects in the future? We're just going to allocate, we're going to pick a new ward and a new area? Am I missing something? Yeah, I'm not, and I'm not saying, I'm not speaking against your project, and I'm not telling you how to spend your money. God bless you, spend your money how you want to spend it. That is your God-given right as an American in the city of Bakersfield, and we will fight for it, whether we agree with your project or not, you get to spend it how you want. But taxpayer money should go to all taxpayers. It should be a fair program. It should benefit everybody. That's all I have to say.
Colleagues, we are having technical issues, and so, you'll just have to signal me for speaking, and then we're going to need to take a voice vote. Councilmember Coleman will be next.
This is for staff. Can you, one of the comments you made was that this is a, we're only paying a percentage of the improvement. What percentage is that?
Of the specific infrastructure improvements that we're looking at, it's about $700,000 total, and this is $300,000 of, these are just those right-of-way improvements, not the total project cost, but it's $300,000 of the $700,000.
And I know that Councilmember Gonzalez talked about some other grants that we have done, but do you have any other examples of large-scale grants?
Outside of those that were already referenced.
Here's what I'm getting to, is, you know, if we had any, I'm afraid that this is getting slanted because of who the applicant is. And, you know, if we built a hotel downtown, would we do the same thing? Because one of the things that we've talked about in the Planning and Community Development Committee is that downtown has certain challenges to building. You know, you have uneven curbs, you have streets that aren't sloped correctly, and all that needs to come out, and it's very, very expensive. It adds to the cost of the development, and that's what we were trying to target. Should that grant program be used elsewhere? I would argue yes. It should be anywhere that there's a similar situation. I don't know we're going to solve that problem tonight, but I'm just a little afraid that if it wasn't for this applicant, if it was LLC Corporation, nobody would have came here and talked tonight. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everybody who came out tonight and spoke on this issue. I have quite a few comments, but I just want to say, it's always a pleasure to be in the presence of Delores. Thank you for all of the work that you've done for our communities and for continuing your advocacy work till this day. And thank you, everyone, again, came out and support. I just want to start by sharing that there are unique opportunities like this project that only come every once in a while. I'll speak from experience. Ward 1 is home to a lot of vacant land, hundreds, if not thousands, of acres of undeveloped vacant land, where I couldn't get a single developer to sit down in a meeting to have a conversation about affordable housing, R1 residential homes, you know, job opportunities, workforce development opportunities. They just simply weren't interested, because guess what? You're not going to be able, as a developer, to be able to, you're not going to be able to make as much money in, you know, development on the east side in certain cases. And so, when there was a unique opportunity for a developer to come in and put in homes, commercial development, create job opportunities, they came to the city. And this, not this council, a previous council, voted to approve a several-million-dollar allocation to install sewer pipeline to head south on Cottonwood Road, MLK Boulevard, and that same developer, with that promise from the city to deliver those funds, now is in control and possession and currently developing over 300 acres in an area and in a corridor that simply would not see that investment otherwise. That is the way that I view this opportunity. It has been vacant for a very long time, and I am so grateful to Emilio and your entire team for seeing the opportunity, working with Councilmember Gonzalez, to make this vision a reality. I also want to address my colleague's comments, though, that the EOA program is unfair. I want to draw attention to a document that actually was created not too long ago. It's our City Council Goals Work Plan, which outlines all of the city council goals. Goal number one for this city council is economic opportunity for all, and I believe rightfully so. And if you take a look at the document, you can scroll down, there are four different sub-bullet points under there that all point to our need to invest in downtown redevelopment. That is the consensus amongst this council to make a concerted effort, an intentional effort, to support downtown, because we know that it benefits all of our communities throughout the entire city. I also want to thank Pastor Trico Matthews. Thank you so much for your comments tonight. I did the math on the ROI. A $35 million return for a $300,000 investment, that is only 0.86% of the total investment into downtown Bakersfield. That, my friends, is a steal, and I'm just so grateful for that investment and looking forward to seeing this project come to life. The other piece that I wanted to bring up is that this is going to create jobs and tourism. Oftentimes, it saddens me, because I know that when, you know, Ms. Huerta goes up and speaks on stage in town where there's a local audience, she doesn't get the same reception as if she were somewhere else around the world onstage with a large audience, an even larger one, and you see that she gets a standing ovation. There are people all around this country, all around this world, who are eager and excited to come and check out this space. And I'm so excited for it to come to life and bring dollars into this community, people sleeping in our hotels, people going to eat, taking their families to eat at local restaurants, hopefully in downtown Bakersfield. I am so excited for that opportunity. But I do have a couple of questions. If I could invite Mr. Huerta up to the mic one more time. I think there were a couple of troubling comments to me about the distinction between the political work of the organization and everything else, and I just hope that you can provide some insight into the distinction. It's my understanding that the IRS is very particular about what can be allocated for what. If you could provide some insight on that, I would appreciate it.
That's correct. Actually, nonprofit law is one of the areas where I practice, and under the IRS Internal Revenue Code, Section 501(c)(3), nonprofit charitable organizations are prohibited from engaging in political partisan activity. In other words, an organization cannot lobby or support for any, or oppose any particular candidate or individual. When you see Ms. Huerta out there expressing her views with respect to a particular candidate, she does that on her own volition. She doesn't do that in the name of the Delores Huerta Foundation. Separate and apart from that, the ownership of the property of the building is the DHF Peace and Justice Corporation, which is separate 501(c)(3). And so, the assets of a nonprofit organization can only be utilized to further the charitable purposes of that organization. And in the event that the organization should dissolve, the assets need to be transferred or conveyed to another, or maybe similar nonprofit, or another nonprofit organization. The Attorney General for the state of California is the gatekeeper, is the ultimate policing organization for nonprofit charitable activities throughout the state of California. And to my knowledge, the Attorney General's Office, past or present, has never made an inquiry or has never received an inquiry with respect to the activities of the Delores Huerta Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Huerta. I appreciate that distinction. I think, I too was thinking along the same lines as Councilmember Gonzalez, in that we have awarded dozens and dozens of EOA grants, economic opportunity area grants, for several years now, hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions. And I'll add a caveat that it's not just for downtown Bakersfield. There are also EOAs, areas that receive this investment in my ward. There are also some in Councilmember Weir's ward as well that have received the benefit. So, it is not just a downtown bucket of funding. But I asked myself the same question. Why is it that this project is the one that we are receiving so much pushback and feedback? We have not received even a modicum of this level of feedback in opposition for any other EOA grant. And I have to ask myself, why is it this particular project? And it reminded me of an actual lawsuit that occurred with our neighbors just down the street at the county of Kern just several years ago. In response to COVID-19, the county was prepared to go into contract negotiations with several local nonprofits, including Building Healthy Communities. with several local nonprofits, including Building Healthy Communities, an organization that is actually, in part affiliated with the Delores Huerta Foundation, at least at that time. And they were denied the contract. And the reasoning from the county board of supervisors was for political reasons. Somebody in their leadership had a couple of posts on social media, and they were denied the contract because they were engaged in political free speech. That is deeply troubling to me. I'm not saying that that is the case tonight, but I have heard comments tonight from the public that I think are deeply concerning. We should not deny contracts based on protected free speech and First Amendment rights. And so I think that that's an important thing to note. And I just want to say that that lawsuit eventually got litigated. And the $1.2 million contract ended up getting awarded. But not only was it awarded, the county of Kern also had to pay the legal fees for that fight. And they also had to hire a free speech expert to train them on how to protect the First Amendment rights. I think we can get it right on the first time here at the Bakersfield City Council. I'm excited for this project. Congratulations for getting to this step, and see you soon.
Thank you. I would just want to mention something really quick. We had a groundbreaking on June 28th.
Mr. Huerta, I think you've already had.
Let's be real quick, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
We had 400 people show up in 100-degree heat. There was no building there, and 400 people were there to see our building. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I've, for a long time, been an advocate of downtown redevelopment and revitalization. And my position has always been that the city should at least provide good infrastructure. And that's what this is about. The sewer, the storm drainings, the streetlights, the sidewalks. And I guess somewhat of an answer to councilmember Bashir Tash, the reason downtown is different. There's a lot of reasons. I think every city is judged by its downtown, number one. But number two, it's the oldest infrastructure and the worst infrastructure in the whole city. And so I am in favor of this because of downtown revitalization. Thank you.
Colleagues, anyone else wishing to speak? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my council colleagues. In closing, I'll just say that this is not just the infrastructure. It is you, the Delores Huerta. Thank you. You are an icon. You are local history. You are global history. A building in your name that is training youth, that is creating jobs, is worth investing in on behalf of the city. It is our, it is now our responsibility. Thank you for advocating for those who put fruits and vegetables on our table. So if you eat fruits and vegetables in this room, you should thank a farm worker. The Delores Huerta, your advocacy allowed for those farmworkers to stand in the shade, to use a restroom, to have a fair working day, to be able to see their children at home, to have health care. And as a child of somebody who is a product of someone who got health care through her parents' employment, I also have you to thank. So if you are today investing in infrastructure in the heart of our city, we thank you for that as a city. And the least we can do is fix the sidewalk. The least we can do is fix the sewer. The least we can do is build aging infrastructure. That is the very least that we can do. And it is not just infrastructure improvements today. It is because of you, the Delores Huerta. It is your legacy. Thank you for still advocating today. Thank you for still advocating for youth. Thank you for advocating for those who are at the margins who no one advocates for. High school students who are getting suspended and expelled at unfair amounts. You were advocating for them in those school districts, and you continue to do that today. I am just at a loss for words that we... I am so proud to live in a community today where we are welcoming this infrastructure and this building into our community. And I will be so proud to see the day that that building goes up. Thank you so much to our state and local legislators, our national, our federal legislators who have supported this infrastructure. And I have been in the crowds. I have been one of those who have cheered when you have advocated for women's rights, for rights that go beyond, you know, a community that may be your own, my own community. I've seen it, I've heard it. So this is an ode to you from the local community as well. It's, you're bringing way more dollars than we are. But I wanted to thank you personally from this dais.
Councilmember Weir, do we should comment? Okay, so I don't see any other requests to speak. Our system is down, so we're going to need to take a voice vote. And city clerk, would you please conduct that? We already have a motion from councilmember Gonzalez.
Vice Mayor Corr.
Yes.
Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Coleman.
Yes.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
No.
Motion is approved with councilmembers Weir and Bashir Tash voting no.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you who have participated in the process. Madam city clerk, the next item, but I'm thinking that that's also going to be a long item. Colleagues, do you need another break?
No.
I have a yes. So let's take another five minutes, and then we'll go on to the next item. All right, would you all please sit down? And we're going to continue with the next item. Madam clerk, would you please announce the next item?
New business item, 12A, street name change, Caesar Chavez Boulevard.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I do have a presentation this evening to outline some of the process, as well as considerations that are taken when considering a street renaming. Let me start by just pointing back to two council referrals that were made in the spring of 2024. Those council referrals asked staff to identify major thoroughfares for consideration for a street renaming, as well as to incorporate an allocation of funding to assess affected property owners. Our street renaming policy is a council policy set by resolution. Last update was in 2021. And there are three different categories that can be used for our street renaming. Category 1 is for an individual for which a state or federal holiday is observed. And in this instance, Caesar Chavez Boulevard or a like name would fall under this category. Category 1 applications or requests only requires an application to the planning commission. Other categories require petitions and other requirements. And then there's a specific segment of the policy that states that the street sign costs to replacements will be borne by the city. Just one, two other clarifying points to our policy. Again, the planning commission is the approving agency. Items can be appealed to the city council. And it does require an application, as already stated. But the city can act as applicant as we did with the Martin Luther King Boulevard renaming from Cottonwood. So staff analysis related to potential major thoroughfares in response to that council referral. We looked at historical and local significance of existing street names. We looked at the number of vehicle trips, the number of existing addresses, if there are major intersections or interchanges, the length of the street and its geographic location and orientation. We looked at major thoroughfares, both east-west and north-south. From that analysis, it's very interesting that a majority of our arterials and even collectors throughout the city have locally and historically significant names. Of those, again, as the referral stated, major thoroughfares, we created a short list of those that didn't have particular local historical significance. And also looked at, again, those other criteria to identify streets that, you know, may have both the right and impacts, but also have minimized on the right impacts as well. We also did some homework about other cities and found that there are a number of cities in California that have done a street renaming specifically for Caesar Chavez. And you see the list there in front of you. There are a number of cities in other states as well, principally in large cities in other states. And I would just note that the average length of other streets in other cities is typically between 1 and 3 miles. But also, city of Los Angeles has a more than 6-mile street stretch. And city of Fresno has a seven, a just over 7-mile street stretch as well. The namings, it's worth noting. Some cities did renamings as of the 1990s, many of the larger cities in California. And other states, there were more so in the early 2000s. And most recently was Fresno. It's actually just been in the last couple of years. And so we'll point to some examples of Fresno as probably one of the more relevant considerations. We also want to look at the impacts for H Street in particular. As you noted in the staff report, there are 390 addresses. I have to say, this is somewhat approximate. We are going off of city data records, but would need to do more refined confirmations through some visits and windshilled surveys. But about 390 addresses, 243 of those commercial, 147 residential. And this is the entirety of H Street from Taft Highway to Golden State Highway. And in that stretch, there are only 202 addresses that hold a current city business license. It's important to note that typically, cities will proactively notify other sister government agencies if there is a street name change. And so it's within some purview of the council. But the Postal Service, Assessor, our own business licensing, major utility partners with which we have partnerships, county board of elections, and importantly, emergency medical services. As we, I'll get to in just a moment, but some of the emergency services feedback. But first, residential addresses, it's important to note, would need to update a fair amount of their personal information. There are some specifics, like things like passports don't actually have to be updated, but driver's licenses, Real IDs do. And so I would strongly recommend, if this moves forward, that the city consider putting together materials and a website to clarify these expectations for community members. Commercial addresses have a few more things that they need to update. And so there's their business listings. They may have collateral. Of course, there's online locations, but also certifications, permits, licenses, and then credit reporting agencies and the state of California. As far as fiscal impacts specific to the city, we've done some homework into what it would take to update our mapping systems. Thankfully, most of our mapping systems at this point are digital. And so there's limited staff time and actually limited impacts to our emergency services to be able to make those updates and be able to have assurances of responding appropriately. They're not major impacts. Replacement of city street signs up and down H Street for the full stretch would be $30,000. The bigger expenses, there's 11 references to H Street on Caltrans highways, freeways. And that would require a $200,000 cost. More important, I think, than just those direct city costs are what might be the costs for local businesses. It's been a challenge, admittedly, for us to pin down a perfect average cost because the nature of the businesses is very different. Some businesses are very small, some businesses are larger. But for the average small business of the business licenses reflected on H Street, we estimate anywhere from $500 to $3,000 of print materials and potentially signs as well. A quick windshilled survey shows that most addresses list the street number, not the street name. But there could be signs, there could be door decals, there could be banners. And we did some estimates as to the costs for those types of print materials, as well as signs. And this is a rough average cost. I will note that there could be some businesses that have a steel pole or, you know, what you might consider a physical brick-and-mortar sign that has references to the street name. Those could be more costly. We saw some businesses with some comparable relocations that have, the city has been a part of, that have some signs that could cost anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000. But the average, we believe, would be different than that. One comparison, city of Fresno recently did their renaming, and they offered a reimbursement business assistance grant. Interestingly, they offered up to $200 for each business to replace their print materials. They had an application process that was only available to commercial businesses. They signed aside $1 million. They have, again, a larger stretch that had many addresses. But I would note again, the exposure of the city of Bakersfield moved forward with a business assistance program specifically for commercial. I would recommend it be for those who have active city business licenses, and your exposure is about 200 businesses. And just to lay out, as we did in our earlier presentation in the charter, the city can choose to move forward. The city could choose to take no action, or the city council could ask staff to conduct additional analysis and come back to your council. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Madam city attorney, is our system still down for requesting to speak? I mean, city clerk, sorry, madam city clerk.
System is still down, Mayor.
The system is?
Down.
Down. So colleagues, if you just raise your hand, councilmember Bashir Tash.
Excuse me, Mayor. Do you want to take public comment on this now?
Yes, I do. It has been a long day, hasn't it? And it's, it's going to continue after this. Yes, so now we will go to the public for comment. Madam city clerk, would you please call the first public speaker? And we do have public speaker cards, and so she'll be calling those in the order in which they were submitted.
Mayor, we've received 31 speaker cards. The first speaker, Alicia Quintana.
And I will encourage you to be brief and not be repetitive. Every bit of time that you take takes away from others. So please be succinct. And we have how much time for this entire segment, Madam city clerk?
20 minutes, Mayor.
20 minutes.
Hello, my name is Alicia Quintana. I have been a lifetime member of the UFW since I was 18 years old. My grandparents and my parents were both activists in the union. I want to bring up that the benefits of the Caesar Chavez brought to the workforce, access to restrooms, access to fresh water, shade, lunch breaks, no pesticides while workers are in the field, medical clinics for farmworkers who otherwise would not have access. Who benefits from the Caesar Chavez? Farmworkers, construction workers, roofers, landscapers, hotel cleaning staff, and cooking staff. Immigrants not being bused in to cross picket lines while union members were allowed to work is the problem that he spoke against on immigrants. It wasn't against immigrants themselves. It was what the growers were doing by bypassing them and busing in people to cross picket lines. I ask you go forward with Agenda 12A. I ask councilman Gonzalez to vote yes on behalf of your constituents in Oleander Sunset, Ward 2, which of which I have went door-to-door and asked how they reflect on this, and they have said yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Gurcharan S. Dillon.
Gutcharan S. Dylan.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Councilmember. My name is Gutcharan Singh Dylan. I'm a resident of Bakersfield. Also, I'm here to support, speak in favor of the name change for the H Street to Cesar This is an honor which is long overdue. I will share, you know, I have written comments, but I'm going to close that and I'm going to speak from my heart what I saw and what I experienced and what his contribution is as a human being to the other human beings. We started farming, just a small farming, in 1979 in Delano area. At that time, I had the opportunity even to visit the 40 acres over there and always remember that. Being a small grower, our relationship with our worker was like a family, like their families was working at the farm as well as our own families, all of us was working at the farm. So I will, you know, I'm talking about 1979. If you go back beyond that, the conditions were a lot more worse than what was in 1979. And I will tell you in 79 what was that. In 120, the 115, 16 degrees.
Mr. Dylan, your time is up. Would you bring your comments to a close, please? You can go ahead and just add another sentence.
Say, I'm sorry, but my time is up?
Your time is up, yes.
Okay.
You can do one more sentence? Yeah, just do a couple more sentences and.
Yeah, okay. So it was a matter of human dignity. How do you, what do you feel when the children, husband, and wife are working in the field? No shade, no bathrooms, and where is the human dignity when the woman has to find a little place outside even to relieve themselves? Similarly, if you look at these, what those working conditions, when it comes to these chemicals, we, ourselves did have, have a very little knowledge about that.
Thank you, Mr. Dylan.
And the people was exposed to that.
Mr. Dylan, I've already extended your time. We have a number of speakers. Thank you for your comments.
One more minute, please.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Mr. Dylan?
I think of what he was.
Mr. Dylan, I've already extended your time. We're just going to go on to the next speaker. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Dr. Thomas Martinez.
And then, Madam Clerk, would you announce the next one so they'll just be ready? And just a reminder to all of you, it's two minutes. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Okay, Dr. Thomas Martinez. Professor Emeritus, I'm 13 days into retirement, so this is the way I'm spending my time. But I didn't come with any prepared statements, I just wanted to be present. But I just want to say that some of the initial speakers here that just looked before me made some important comments about the specific impact that Cesar Chavez and Dolores and the UFW and the farmworker movement had locally. It's a very critical point in time, and I'll just mention that. I'm originally from Bakersfield, one of the few people who remember some of the things that have gone on. But as I know very well, that back in the 60s, that in 70s, the work that was being done by the farmworkers on behalf of workers for their, for just basic dignity, as was mentioned, is critically important, but was resisted at many levels locally, right? We could talk about all that kind of stuff. And even in 1993, when Caesar passed away, there was a community stepped forward to immediately ask for something to be done, and they chose to name an elementary school. And at that time, many people in the room and on the council remembered that there was much opposition to that, but there was tremendous community support, and that's what drove discussion. So my only point then is that what's going on today, we're not breaking any big ground, we're not at the forefront of anything, we're in fact behind, as has been mentioned. Many cities, many states have done much to recognize. And all the simple question is, are we ready to recognize and appreciate the work that was done by not just one man, but by an entire movement? And the impact that that had on many young people today in terms of inspiring people to go on and do things in the world of social justice? The only other individual probably is at the same level locally would have been someone, say, Earl Warren. But, you know, that's about the equivalent. So I am definitely in support, and I think it is long overdue.
Thank you, Dr. Martinez. Congratulations on your retirement. Next speaker, please.
Barbara Fellows, followed by Ladonna Dodge.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Barbara Fernandez Fellows. Anyway, I have no objection to naming a street after Mr. Chavez. But why not something that's not so heavily populated, something that doesn't cause businesses extra expenses? I mean, what about the?
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was doing so good. Anyway, I'm not opposed to a street being named after Cesar Chavez. But I think with it being on H Street, there's businesses and people who have to go out of their way to get new paperwork, new business forms. But what about, what about the West Side Parkway? What's wrong with naming that Cesar Chavez Parkway? Or some new street that's going to be built in a new division or someplace? But to me, it just causes a lot of extra work for people when it doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be H Street. That's all I wanted to say, and I sure hope you take what I said seriously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fellows. Next speaker, please.
Ladonna Dodge, followed by Hertz Ramirez.
My name's Ladonna Dodge. I have no problem with a street name being named after Cesar Chavez. I do have an issue with this city spending the money to do this at this time. I asked a question before, where is the money coming from? Where's it coming from? Is this coming out of Major Inn also? And if it is, who's giving the permission? Has any of this gone before the Major Inn Committee? It has not. As far as I know, it has not, and I have asked. It has not. So how are we spending this amount of money? And how are we putting this burden on the businesses and the individuals on that street? It's not fair. It's not right. They have to change all certificates, all bank accounts, all letterhead, all envelopes, you name it, they have to change it. And you know why I think about that? I would be the person doing it in a business, and it's not right. The numbers you're putting up here do not include staff time. How much is it going to cost for each individual to go out and change those street signs? To do all of this? What is the cost for the manpower to do it? Has anybody brought that up? They have not. So my issue is not a skin color. I don't care about that. My little girl's African-American, my grandchildren are Chinese-Mexican. I don't care. But what I do care is that at this time in this city, you guys, all of you, have sent all of us notifications that our costs are going up. The governor is causing our costs to go up. Gas is going up, everything is going up in this state. Insurance is going up. People are going to be losing their homes, losing what they have, and you guys are incurring this cost for what reason? I want to know why. Why now, when you guys have all told us that we have a budget crisis in this city?
Thank you, Ms. Dodge.
You can't fix our sewers, fix our stuff, and stop this.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hertz Ramirez, followed by Raji Barar.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hertz Ramirez, proud American citizen, taxpayer, Bakersfield resident. On behalf of the men and women of Launa, we own a building on H Street, so we are definitely in support of this. It pays an homage to a great man and a great union leader and the heritage here in Kern County, so we ask that you move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Next speaker, please. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Raji Barar. I'm the co-founder of the Bakersfield Seek Women's Association. I'm a trustee with the CSU. I am the chief operating officer of Countryside Market and Restaurants, and more importantly, I'm the proud daughter of former farmworkers. I'm here today in support of Cesar Chavez Boulevard. I'd like to share a little bit with you about why it matters so much to me. You heard from Dr. Gutcharan Dylan talking about the conditions in the fields. Well, my parents worked in the fields. We grew up in farm labor camps. My mom tells us about the times when they would have to have five or six women gather around and dig a hole in the ground so they could relieve themselves. My dad, who's here with me today, always talks to me about how he used to fill up his water bottle with ice, and by the end of the day, it was boiling hot water. I share this with you because I want you to understand that Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta not only helped my parents have access to shade, clean drinking water, and restrooms, but they gave my parents access to dignity. And for that reason, I want to make sure that my community understands how valuable Cesar Chavez was to our family. Today, we're developers here in Kern County. We love our city, and we employ hundreds of people here in Kern County, most of whom have come from the fields and work with us now. And I think it's so important that we honor our heritage and our history. And for so many of us who are immigrants, first generation, we benefited from the work of Cesar and Dolores Huerta. And I can't think of a better thing to do than to pay tribute to them, especially since we're, like somebody mentioned before, we're already behind the curve. So again, thank you so much, and thank you, Dolores, for everything you've done for my family and us children that today we could be here thriving and being a part of this wonderful city. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Barar. Next speaker, please.
Magda Menendez, followed by Noe Garcia.
Good evening. My name is Magda Menendez. I'm a resident of City of Bakersfield. I can put my eyeballs on. And I'm also a lifelong resident of Kern County. I am in total support of renaming a prominent Bakersfield street after Cesar Chavez. Cesar's work and accomplishments, and I have to say, Dolores, and also Larry Idolong in Delano with the Filipino farmworkers, turned the page on a very dark and dehumanizing chapter of our history. At one time, workers did not have access to water or toilets out in the fields. When there was water, everyone often had to share a common cup that was tied to the water container. Sexual harassment of women was rampant. If the grower provided housing, you could bet it was substandard. How do I know all of this? Having grown up in Lamont, California, I lived it. Contractors ripped you off. I remember working for one contractor who paid in cash. The money came in an envelope with the deductions, including the deduction for Social Security listed on it. It didn't dawn on me until later, this man had never even asked for my Social Security number. I believe much of the resistance to the name change comes from people that have no knowledge or appreciation of the history of the farmworker movement and how it served as a catalyst for social and economic change for farmworkers, not only farmworkers, but other residents. I'm reminded of the resistance right here in Kern County to one of the greatest literary works of all time, The Grapes of Wrath. In addition to The Grapes of Wrath being banned, there were actual book burnings. Was this because John Steinbeck's work was a lie? Or was it because it brought awareness to the dehumanizing treatment of the despot migrants by our local growers at the time? How sad it is that it's easier for society to deny or ignore a sad chapter in its history. It's sadder than it is to acknowledge mistakes and learn and grow from them. Learning and growing from our mistakes is what we teach our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, Madam Clerk.
Noe Garcia, followed by Beto Sala.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Noe Garcia. I'm a proud resident, citizen of Ward 1 in Councilmember Arias's district. Just want to be in support of this renaming. I'm a resident of that neighborhood, living right off of South H Street. Grew up, attended Plans Park Elementary, attended Greenfield Middle School, and attended South High School, walking and taking the bus to and from South H Street. You know, this is something that we need to share with our children, with our future generations, the same way that many of our residents in the City of Bakersfield get to drive down or walk down Buck Owens Boulevard or Merle Haggard Drive. This is the same opportunity and fortune that we should share with our children, with our future generations, the honor of driving and walking down Cesar Chavez Boulevard. Just proudly stand in support and thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next speaker, please.
Beto Sala, followed by Trico Matthews.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, staff. My name's Alberto Sala. I have been an attorney for 42 years. I'm in private practice, and I am certified by the State Bar of California as a specialist in criminal law. I am a past president of the Kern County Bar Association and currently serve as chairman of the Judicial Appointments Evaluation Committee. My spouse, Sylvia Mendez, is a certified court reporter. She has owned her own company for decades, and we own six commercial buildings on H Street. Six of them, including my office and my wife's office. I fully support renaming H Street to Cesar Chavez Boulevard to bring recognition to the accomplishments of one of the greatest labor leaders of our time, who lived, worked, and died in Kern County. Cesar Chavez showed us the importance of treating those who harvest our fruits and vegetables with fairness, with dignity, and compassion, which not only benefited workers, but also contributed to improved labor relations and enhanced productivity for our local agricultural enterprises. As a former Deputy Attorney General with the Agricultural Labor Relations Board, I can tell you that the efforts of Cesar Chavez contributed to stabilize labor relations in the long run in this county. The costs and perhaps the inconveniences and the procedures that business owners on H Street, including myself and my wife, are nominal in comparison to the benefit that our city will receive. Changing H Street to Cesar Chavez Boulevard will continue our city's commendable commitment to naming streets after great individuals such as Buck Owens, Merle Haggard, and Martin Luther King, who brought honor to our city through their accomplishments. So I urge the council to continue this commitment by honoring the legacy of Cesar Chavez. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Trico Matthews.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thanks, glad to be back. Trico Matthews, Chair for the California Racial Equity Commission, Senior Pastor of Church of God, and resident here, Ward 5. Mr. Coleman, ditto to what everyone else has already shared, I just want to share four quick perspectives from the hats that I wear. So as a humanitarian, my wife and I have lived outside of Bakersfield and Kern County, and as Councilmember Arias said, really there are just... And as Councilmember Arias said, really, there are just two people, iconic legends from Bakersfield that people around the world respect as some of the greatest citizens in America, not just in Kern or in our state. Nobody else from Bakersfield has a state holiday named after them. So I think that should be recognized. If it's recognized around the state, I think it should be recognized here in Bakersfield. But also, as a racial equity commissioner, I do believe that it's appropriate to honor and recognize those who have righted wrongs. And we've heard about some of those. He was an advocate for social justice. We should honor and recognize that. As a pastor, I believe that God is the author of all diversity. And if you believe that too, I know many of you do, well, then, representation is just a testament to the great masterpieces that he has done intentionally, on purpose. And then finally, just a story from little Trico, 20-year-old Trico. My wife and I, when we were dating, we used to walk down H Street, holding hands. I just want to be able to retell that story on a famous street. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Next speaker, please.
Mary Helen Barrow.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you again for hearing me. I'm here proudly and humbly asking you to do the great honor to this city to rename H Street Cesar Chavez Boulevard. What a... You know, I've traveled all over this country twice a year for 10, 15 years. I can't tell you how many great cities around this nation have a Cesar Chavez Boulevard in them, including LA, just south of us here. And I think they renamed that Cesar Chavez Boulevard 20 years ago. We're a little behind the times, folks.
Ms. Barrow, your time is up.
Our son, our native son, our hero. And we deserve this honor.
Thank you, Ms. Barrow.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. We have run out of time. I'm going to extend the time a bit more, 10 minutes. So here's what I'm asking of all of you. We have still a number of speakers who would like to speak. Let's just be efficient in our comments. That would be very helpful. Would you please call the next speaker? If you could just do 30 seconds or a minute, that would be very helpful to get in as many speakers as possible. Madam Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Jesus Garcia, followed by John Antonaris.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Jesus Garcia. A proud Cesar Chavez Elementary School parent. 25 years ago, Cesar Chavez was named by Pete Parra. On the board was Irma Carson and Reverend Ralph Anthony. So this was not a Latino thing. It wasn't a black thing. It was a group of wonderful citizens here from Bakersfield that had that elected. Rather than celebrate that fact, there was an attempted recall. I know folks remember that, of those, of Pete Parra and the other candidates. They failed. They failed dramatically. What happened since then? Well, Chavez became a distinguished school. It had a wonderful track program, and my daughters learned about strong black women that helped them in their career as they went on to college. So representation does matter. There's 35 cities in the United States that have a Cesar Chavez Boulevard. We do not. It's time to change that. Getting a little social here, but Kern County is 56% Latino. There are... And we have folks here on the board, on the dice. In fact, all of you, Ms. Carr Gonzalez, Mr. Arias, that are people that when you go and you're in the community, you are seen as leaders and you are respected. I'm on social media on a couple of you, but I know all of you are made proud of by the folks that you interact with, and you're seen as an example of good government and going forward. Folks, the time has changed. And I think rather than be the little Dutch boy holding your thumb on a dam, the dam's about to break. And you either be on the right course or you can have the opportunity to fix what you may have not been doing right in the beginning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, esteemed council and mayor. My name is John Antonaris, and I'm a proud third-generation BHS driller. My grandfather was a driller, my father was a driller, and I'm a driller. When somebody mentions H Street, I think of BHS and Harvey Auditorium or Historic Fox Theater or the Padre Hotel. There are so many other things that are on H Street and part of the cultural fabric of Bakersfield. And I think that that culture is so important to maintain. And I humbly request that you do not rename H Street. And should you decide that you do want to rename it, then perhaps you yourself might want to consider changing your name, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Antonaris. Next speaker, please.
Wayne Malley, followed by Cory Hayners.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Mayor Go, my name is Wayne Malley. Councilmembers, if I could get the city clerk to hand these out?
Sure. Just put it in the box right there. Thanks.
This is a pretty much 80% of actual list of what it's going to cost for a business to change just address. We have software that was specially built. Our address is permanently in there. We cannot change that. So we're going to have to spend thousands of dollars getting that software rewritten. And we have accreditation, which is ISO, which is the International Organization for Standards, that we have to go back, and we're going to end up having to be re-audited, reapply, and that can be $8,000 to $20,000. And the Federal Aviation Administration, we're licensed by them. We're the only lab in the world that's licensed by them. That's going to have to be redone. Payroll taxes, IRS records, DMV, all this. There's a whole list of stuff that's got to be done. Who's going to pay for this? We could be looking at $50,000 to $100,000 to do what we need to do just to change the name of the street. So where's that money coming from? It's not going to come out of my pocket. I'd rather close the business if I'll sue against you guys. $30, $50 million lawsuit, that would work for me. So you can read that, and that'll give you an idea of all the things that's got to be changed. And I have to hire people to do this. Because if I take my people, my employees that I'm using right now to start doing this, I'm going to lose income. If I lose income, then I'm going to sue you people. So it's up to you guys. So I know I'm changing the name.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Next speaker, please.
Cory Hayners, followed by Jess Sanders.
Cory Hayners, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. This morning is the first time I actually heard about the street name change. And I got passionate about it because I've been here 48 years, and it's always been H Street. Just like people back in the '70s would say, "We cruise Chester." It would be a big deal to change something that they have this memory of. So what I did was I got in my car, and I wanted to take a drive from as far as I could on H Street to as far south. And I started on... Well, actually, I went through Oil Dell. And I have to say, Oil Dell, whatever ward that is, I apologize, I don't know, but I would put this money towards Oil Dell. And I would say, like, the tweakers that I had seen just scratching their bodies and walking half naked, and the shopping carts that were on the grounds and just abandoned, I would say, the trash on the grounds, the boxes everywhere, could go towards cleaning up that area. So I got on 30th and H, and as I made my first turn south on H, I noticed that there was a mattress lift on the side, and it was a shade for a man sleeping. And right next to him on the street over was a half-clothed man with his bicycle just itching like crazy. I stopped at the Fox, I stopped at the Padre. They had no idea about the name change. So that's how big this news is. It just was shocking. I drove down towards Truxton. I passed over California, which I think Antonaris talked about that. That is a driller area. And then I passed the United Farm Workers symbol on H Street. And then it dawned on me that that makes sense why this wants to be changed, H Street, and that's why that was chosen. Regardless, move on, everybody. Please pass that. I just noticed that. Anywho, I go further down, and I see that there is no sidewalks. There's no sidewalks, like, H Street all the way to Hoskins. My point is this: Washington Redskins tried to change their name. People got all upset. Don't change something that is just already set in stone. My other thing, too, is as I crossed over Kern Valley Meat Packing, I'll take some of their time that they went over also. Kern Valley Meat Packing Company has been here, had started in 1935.
Ms. Sanders, your time is up.
My grandpa started in 1936. So if you have meat on your table, you can think him from 1936. No, no. They went over. I would like to also.
Ms. Sanders, you may finish your comment with one more sentence.
Thank you, Karen. Go. My grandpa worked there for 50 years. I'm not asking Green Acres Avenue to be changed to it, although I think it should. My point is, Cesar Chavez does deserve a street. But why wreck something that has so much stuff that has to be changed? Give him a new development. He does deserve that.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Jess Sanders, followed by Dennis McLean.
Doesn't look like Mr. Sanders is here.
Dennis McLean?
Yes, thank you. Mr. McLean? Doesn't look like he's your next speaker, please.
Jacqueline Aguilar.
Go on to the next one? Okay, just bring her back after...
Dolores Huerta. Paul Linfesti? Oh, Dolores Huerta, okay.
Welcome.
Again, thank you very much. I'm going to identify myself this time. Dolores Huerta, the co-founder of the United Farm Workers Union. And I'm asking you, please, to do, name the street after Cesar. You know, there are cities, I mean, there are states all over the United States of America. Texas has several... Texas has several cities that have streets named after Cesar. Arizona has several streets in different cities that are named after Cesar Chavez. Illinois has streets and a post office named after Cesar Chavez. The city of Kansas has a Cesar Chavez street. And New Mexico has a Cesar Chavez Boulevard. And not only that, but Albuquerque, New Mexico, for the last 32 years, they spend $30,000 to $40,000 every year to have a Cesar Chavez celebration, okay? So we know that Cesar is a civil rights hero, a labor hero. And, you know, he did get the Presidential Medal of Freedom from President Clinton. There is a stamp, as we know, that has been, again, named after Cesar Chavez. So I think that this is the least that we can do. And, you know, remembering what Cesar did, fasting three times for nonviolence for 25 days, and the last fast for 36 days. This is someone that we definitely need to commemorate. And I think naming the street after Cesar is just a very, very thing that we can do. And I just think that we, in Bakersfield, the city of Bakersfield, the county of Kern, we need to celebrate our essential workers who are the farmworkers. This is who Cesar was working for, and I think that we should do this because, you know, to celebrate, starting with Weed Patch, you know, there where we had The Grapes of Wrath was filmed. John Steinbeck was there, Henry Ponder, Woody Guthrie, many others. But we should celebrate. And this is something that I think the city of Bakersfield can actually kick off and then, you know, make it sure. This is a very, very unique area.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta.
And it is, of course, based on the work of the farmworkers and Cesar Chavez. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Paul Linfesti?
Actually, did Ms. Aguilar come back into the room? Yeah, go ahead.
Apologies. It's been a long night. Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor Go and councilmembers. My name is Jacqueline Aguilar, and I am a long-term, longtime resident of Bakersfield, and I also work downtown. I'm here to speak in support of the proposal to rename H Street to Cesar Chavez Boulevard. This isn't just a name change. It's a chance to reflect the values that make Bakersfield strong. Cesar Chavez is a part of California's history and its Central Valley story. His efforts brought attention to the working people who keep our region and our economy moving. I respectfully ask the council to move forward with renaming H Street to Cesar Chavez Boulevard. It's a meaningful way to honor the people and the values that define our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, even with the time extension, our time is up. So what I'm going to ask is, for those of you who had submitted speaker cards, I'll just throw a show of hands just so the council can be aware of who's here. For those who had submitted speaker cards, who are in support of staff's recommendation, raise your hand if you submitted a speaker card and didn't speak already, and didn't speak already. Thank you. And for those of you who have not spoken yet and submitted a speaker card, those in opposition, if you would, raise your hands, too, please. Okay, thank you. And so now, we'll go to council for a comment in action. And I know that at this point, we still don't have our ability to buzz in. So if you can just raise your hands, Councilmember Bashir Tosh.
Being probably one of the only people in the room that's lived through this and have seen the damage of changing a street name when it's an established street name, I just want to say, first off, I think that we need to find a location that's being developed that would pay homage and tribute that's not going to impact the livelihood of small business owners and residents. And I know there are individuals that spoke, and they're happy to foot that bill. I'm glad that they can afford that kind of stuff. But there are lots of mom-and-pop stores on H Street that cannot. It cost me $31,000 in work to change and update 368 feet of a street name change. $31,000. And I have resources to make that happen. We're talking about 44,000 feet, over, 44,352 feet, and what that's going to do to small businesses. And if you will take the emotion out of it, and if Mr. Chavez is here right now, and you said, "Would you be okay with this name change happening and it potentially damaging residents and small business owners and hurting what they're trying to build up?" Would you be... If he is the person you believe and say he is, there's no way he would be okay with that. He would be for the people, supporting the people, helping the people. $31,000 for less than 400 feet, that's what it costs. And still, to this day, a year and a half later, on my way to council meeting, I get a text message from one of my employees that's having difficulty because someone was routed through Google Maps, even though the name is adjusted, to another business. That opens us up to liabilities. That's silly. It's unnecessary. We can make both sides happy today by just going back to the drawing board, doing a better analysis, and finding an area that makes everybody happy. It doesn't have to damage the multitude of businesses and residents that are there. It is so expensive. This list that he supplied, it's real. I mean, the bonds, the paperwork, and still to this day, even in our city database, the map that we use to identify wards, what is it, the S3 map system? It's still not changed in that system that our city uses, the street name that I'm talking about. Still hasn't been updated in there. When I order supplies or resources for my staff on a Saturday because they're hungry or thirsty, you know how many times Uber Eats delivers to the wrong location because the map still isn't fixed? I mean, twice a month? I mean, it hurts business. It hurts the livelihood. It's all that people. And we haven't taken... And we haven't taken really any consideration into what that's going to do to all these small businesses. It's going to put people under. I guarantee you, half the small businesses with a $31,000 expense would probably have to close up shop or go into debt. Is anybody okay with that? I mean, no. There's a way to make this work that's not going to hurt people, hurt businesses, and this is not the way that it's going to be done. That's all I have.
Thank you. Colleagues, Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm looking at this last page of, I think it's the last page, page seven of your presentation, it's the last page. And the very last item is community engagement strategy. And so my question is, what community engagement has been done so far to identify how we should recognize Cesar Chavez, which street should be done, how we're going to raise the money, those kinds of things? Have we done any of that?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Coleman, Mayor and Council. We have not initiated community engagement related to the street renaming. I was remiss earlier in pointing out, when I talked about it, it goes to the Planning Commission, there's a process there where the Planning Commission, this would be an application that could go to the Planning Commission. In the process of the Planning Commission hearing that, individuals would get noticed based on what application is submitted to the Planning Commission. People who would be having addresses that are impacted by what's in the application would be noticed, there would be a hearing process. But no, we have not done community engagement as a city function on this topic.
So people would only be able to comment on this project? They wouldn't be able to speculate about other options that might solve some problems?
That is accurate.
This budget that you had, I had a question for you, in the city of Fresno, they allowed a million dollars for reimbursement, replace print material, how much of that do they spend, do you know?
I do not know.
Okay. I think that's my biggest problem with this is, not how we honored Caesar Chavez, but this whole process about how it became H Street. It's like the city pushing down to the community, oh, we're going to make it H Street, rather than the community coming together and, hey, we want it to be whatever street. And then, you know, build a coalition behind that, that's kind of my, my take on everything. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there councilmembers who wish to speak? Councilmember Bashir Tosh?
I was going to speak.
Oh. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Couple of comments right away. First and foremost, it is, I think, notable, it should be noted, that almost every speaker who spoke tonight believes that Cesar Chavez should be recognized in our community. And that is, that is something for Bakersfield, and that's a historic moment to hear from even those who oppose H Street renaming, to also recognize that this man and his legacy is worth our recognition and our time and effort to honor him. You know, Corny Rodriguez is in the back, he was for many decades, many years, the director of the Chicano Cultural Center in Bakersfield College. And the reason I know that is because he was my dad's best friend, and they worked together very closely. And it was through my dad and through Corny that I learned all about Cesar and I learned all about the farmworker movement. And it's wonderful to see you here tonight, Corny, thank you so much. For me, the questions are really simple, three questions. Number one, should we name a street after Cesar Chavez? Number two, should that street be H Street? And number three, how do we pay for it? And those are the real basic questions that we need to answer tonight. Number one, I think we've all answered the question, yes, there should be a street named after Cesar Chavez. Dolores pointed out, there are many cities throughout the country, I took a list, a look at all the cities in Texas, Dallas, Austin, El Paso, Houston, San Antonio, Corpus Christi, Lubbock, Austin, other cities like Salt Lake City, Kansas City have also named a street after Cesar Chavez. So that answer is clear, yes, there should be a name in Bakersfield, a street named after Cesar Chavez. Number two, should that street be H Street? I think we've heard a lot of pros and cons, it looks like staff has done some pretty robust analysis, and based on their staff recommendation, I can support that. And then the third, third question is, how do we pay for it? And I would be a huge proponent in a business grant program and reimbursement program, and I think that's the right thing to do. I began looking at ways in which we could actually fund this, and if you don't mind, I'd like to recommend that we look at some of our revenue that's generated from the arena that we can put towards this one-time expenditure. I also think that we can utilize some of our TOT funds to help us with this, with this particular project. This is a one-time project in nature, and so I'd like us to pursue that, and I'm going to make a referral tonight that we, that we look towards that and include that in our fiscal analysis as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Bashir Tosh?
Our options for action are the three that are there, no action, direct staff to return to council additional analysis, or direct staff to prepare an application to Planning Commission, those are the...
Those are not the only actions, Councilmember, those are just, are, three of our more standard, but if council has a more nuanced approach...
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion that we, we find a new development or a street that would not impact the livelihood of small businesses and residents in Bakersfield in a negative way. That honors both sides and makes everyone, I mean, it just, I'm not advocating for some rinky-dink alley or any of that stuff at all, I'm just saying, let's, let's make it work, let's put some more thought behind it and make sure that it doesn't hurt people and...
Yeah. Councilmember Bashir Tosh, I would ask the audience to give the council member the courtesy of speaking without comments from the, from the audience, go ahead.
That's my motion.
Just for clarity, I understand your motion then to be to refer it back to staff for some additional analysis and perhaps then come back with some options of different locations?
I would say after a thorough cost analysis too, not this, because I know this isn't true because I've lived through it, and also maybe some community engagement, just, just more thoughtfulness, so that...
Okay, so again, your motion to refer back to staff...
Staff for analysis.
For staff to come up with additional options in addition to H, of some locations for a possible street renaming, along with the financial impact of that for each option, and community engagement with each option, and then return back to council with that presentation.
That is correct.
Thank you, Councilmember Bashir Tosh. Other colleagues? Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep my comments brief, it's getting late into the night, I think folks want to go home. I will just say that many of the same arguments that I would have made on this item are almost identical and parallel to the comments and the reasons why we should have, why we did support the Dolores Huerta Peace and Justice Cultural Center allocation. Really grateful that that moved forward, I think this works hand in hand with it. I dream of a reality at the north end of H Street where we have the Peace and Justice Center right there, smack dab on Avenida de Cesar Chavez, one day into the future. I think about my own upbringing, despite my Filipino phenotype, I'll have you know that I am Mexican on both sides. Second genera, thank you, second generation on my father's side, third generation on my mom's side. And one of the agreements that my parents made when they were first married and were deciding to have kids and start a family was that they weren't going to teach me or any of my siblings Spanish. It was a very calculated decision, a decision that they made because they feared the worst if I looked and also sounded like a Mexicano. And I know there are many, many other children out there today and into the future who will have similar upbringings because that is the way that their parents have been scarred by the society and the way that society looks at us and at folks like me. And I just think about the decision that we're making tonight and what impact we can have on so many future generations of young children who see a small sign hanging over their intersection that has the name that they can associate with. That's the power of tonight's decision, and I'm so excited to support it, and just want to say again, thank you to everyone who came out and supported.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Others wishing to speak? Councilmember, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilmembers, and thank you to the residents of Bakersfield, the community outreach that...
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
The community outreach that was done and the residents that are here as a result of that community outreach, everyone who has stayed until 9:41 PM to hear from the council. This is the community, Councilmember Coleman, that is here in support, and many more that were here before. So I want to thank you all, and I actually want to thank the community that brought this, this effort forward. I also want to acknowledge former Assemblywoman Nicole Para, who's in the, in the room with us here today, thank you for being here, thank you for staying till way late, we appreciate you and we appreciate your leadership in the community. And all of our various community leaders who have spoken, who are here in the room. This effort was born out of the community, this was brought to the council from the community, it is by the community, and we are here today bringing that forward, one year later. So I thank the city staff for taking their time and diligently doing the research and the work required in order to bring this back so that we can have this discussion and potentially move it forward today. Caesar Chavez was a first-generation American, he was born in Arizona, and at the age of 11, his family lost their farm during the Great Depression and became migrant farmworkers. Caesar finished his formal education after the eighth grade and worked the fields full-time to help support his family. Throughout his youth and into adulthood, Caesar traveled the migrant streams throughout California, laboring in the fields, orchards and vineyards where he was exposed to the hardships and injustices of farmworker life. Caesar joined the US Navy in 1946 in the aftermath of World War II and served in the Western Pacific. He returned from the service in 1948. Caesar Chavez was a veteran who served in the US Navy. So if you believe in honoring all of our veterans regardless of their race, gender, orientation, I believe you should support this street renaming in the city of Bakersfield. Caesar Chavez was an American labor leader, and we here, and I believe, we here in Bakersfield and Kern County, believe in the dignity of that hard-working labor. I belong to working-class roots, and whether you work in the oil fields, the almond tree fields, or on construction sites, you deserve dignity, and I believe that this labor rights leader who was, as community leaders have said, lived, worked and died here in Kern County, I believe for the same reason that you should support this renaming. If you believe that everyone, especially those who work in the oil fields, in the farm fields, on different construction sites and somewhere else, that, that they also deserve to see a doctor, that they also deserve to have a restroom break, that they also deserve to stand under the shade of a tree, that you also shouldn't be sprayed with pesticides, I believe that you should support this street renaming. And if you believe in working-class people having that dignity of their historical roots being celebrated, I believe you should support this street renaming. Now Caesar Chavez was a first-generation American who followed the principles of Gandhi, a man from across the globe, his principles are tied globally, and to a man whose roots are much closer to my families. So how can I feel, living here in Kern County, that I don't have the same connection to the principles of somebody like Caesar? And today Caesar's a global name and the movement that came from him and others, and yet we have not honored him as we have honored others who have taken our city to the global stage and put our city on the map. And I consider it no accident that my own roots are here in a community that is so proud to belong to working-class roots. Caesar's work was planted here, and so many Central Valleys, working families find their roots, just as folks have shared. And as others have shared. I too want to live in a city where the diversity of my neighbor is not only just welcome, but it is celebrated. I want the children of Bakersfield to grow up in a city where working-class, blue-collar work is given respect, dignity and honor, and I think that's what this street renaming really means. Because Caesar's story is America's story, it's America's story, it's Bakersfield's story, it's Kern County's story. And the Bakersfield of today must reflect the stories of this soil and its people. There's been a lot of mention of Bakersfield's culture and culture being preserved on H Street, but culture lives and thrives with people, it is not in buildings. Buildings become empty without people who create culture, who keep culture vibrant and keep culture alive. And our city is simply incomplete without the very diverse, celebrated diversity of our city. Ming Avenue, a potato farmer, are we going to change Ming Avenue? You know, we celebrate Buck Owens Boulevard, Merle Haggard, so many folks are celebrated, and that is the diversity that is celebrated within Bakersfield. We have smaller street names for folks who have Basque origin that call Bakersfield home, which is also my next-door neighbor. One of our councilmembers has helped a street be named in the name of his own father. And while I think, you know, Councilmember Bashir Tosh says maybe Caesar wouldn't agree, you're probably right, because he was actually more about the people that he was representing and the farmworkers. So yeah, he wouldn't want us to name a street, but that's why we're doing it, so that we remember that history, because so many of us stand in the shade of the trees that he has planted and the movement that, that came from there. And it is local history that we should be so proud of that 35 other cities already celebrate. I don't know that Salt Lake City or Milwaukee have such a history that, that we, that a close history that we, as we do with Caesar. So I think, you know, case in point, when the funds are available, you can make an effort, and if you're interested in, and you think that other folks should be celebrated that have put Bakersfield on the map, have made our community proud. We received a letter, actually from some constituents, that said, we should honor Betty Ong, I agree, I do agree with that as well, and that's an effort that should come forward as well from the community. So the community that believes in that, you know, I hope to see you bring that effort forward as well. And as we approach Caesar's 100th birthday, I consider it the honor of my lifetime to make the motion today that we rename H Street to Avenida de Cesar Chavez. H Street runs through the heart of the city, our vibrant downtown, south to the end of our city, where our city continues to grow, and it's visible from our freeways, all of our intersections into the city, the 99, the 58, Taft Highway, Golden State Highway, and that's why I think today it is such an honor to make sure that the street that we do choose that is supported by staff research runs through the heart of our city, and it is visible for every visitor who comes into our city to see that here in the city of Bakersfield, all are welcome. Here, we honor our local history. And I would be so honored to see that we have a literal sign that represents that. So today, I make the motion that we rename H Street to Avenida de Cesar Chavez. I direct staff to prepare an application on behalf of the city of Bakersfield to the Planning Commission, including a final fiscal analysis, final location and scope of street renaming, and a community engagement strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Others who wish to comment, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm with Councilman Gonzalez, and he said that, yes, the street name makes sense, and yes, H makes sense. How are we going to pay for it and what's it really going to cost is still floating out there, and it is the Planning Commission's final decision, so I just, I want to be clear that we're not making the decision to name the street, we're making the decision to apply to Planning Commission. We're making the decision to apply to the planning commission. And planning commission could decide. I guess, you know, the cost element, the businesses are more affected, and there's much more business north of 58 and downtown versus south and fewer, much fewer addresses. And so it would seem to me that an option would work as Buck Owens and Merle Haggard are only one exit and go one direction off of the freeways, but still have extensive coverage on the freeway and cover a significant part of town. So I guess it's a question. Is that an opportunity for the planning commission, or does her motion not cover that?
Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Smith. Great question. I'm glad you brought it up. From my vantage point, that is an option that the planning commission can consider. If I understand the Vice Mayor's motion, it's a very, it's a broad motion. So it's, the application is going to cover the potential street name change on the entirety of H Street. Again, the planning commission can make a determination. It can lessen that street. It can go to a different street. Keep in mind that since the city council is the applicant, my guess is that, first and foremost, there's going to be an appeal on this. I think it's pretty clear that there will be an appeal, and the appeal will come back to the city council. In the unlikely event that there is not an appeal, I would tell you that as the city council, you are the city council, and you're going to direct the city manager and the city attorney to bring it back. So it will ultimately come back to the city council. I feel very confident in that. But yes, that is an option for the planning commission to get into. And it will give the staff, we have to notice everybody on H Street. Remember, there are no time limits in the planning commission for when they, how they speak to this. There's not a 20-minute, there's not a two-minute. So that's another reason why it goes to the planning commission. And hopefully, staff will have some available options, and planning commission can give staff some direction there. But we, this is, this is going to be a process. And yes, it will return back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify my motion, it is the language of potentially. So I just wanted to keep it specific.
Would you please sit down? Please sit down. Thank you.
What? Did you have a concern, Alex?
No, just go ahead.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor? Go ahead.
I just wanted to know what her concern was as a community member. She can't just...
We have somebody in the gallery that just won't be quiet. The yellow shirt.
Yeah, it's true.
Okay, I've, thank you. I've already asked the audience to be quiet. Go ahead. Yes. And please, yeah.
I understand, Councilmember Cor, Vice Mayor Cor, that your motion is the entirety of H Street.
Yes. That's my motion.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
I'm clear.
Anyone else requesting to speak? Councilmembers? No? So we have two motions right now on the floor. And as is our procedure, we take the second motion first. So we'll be voting first on the Vice Mayor's motion. And in that our system is not working, we will take a voice vote. So Madam City Clerk, would you please call for that? We're voting on...
Can I have the city attorney, please, Jenny? If you could read out my motion?
Okay, I'm going to try. My understanding is that the motion on the floor is from the Vice Mayor directing staff to prepare an application to the planning commission, which will rename H Street to Avenida de Cesar Chavez. And the planning commission will also consider the final fiscal analysis, the final location, as well as some community engagement strategy.
Thank you. That is the motion. And so, Madam City Clerk, if you will do a voice vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cor?
Yes.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Weir?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Coleman?
No.
Councilmember Bashir Tash? Motion is approved with Councilmembers Weir, Coleman, and Bashir Tash voting no.
Thank you. And thank you for all those who participated. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's statements.
We still have colleagues? Councilmember Coleman?
Mayor, I want to refer an item to staff in the Planning and Community Development Committee for review regarding sober living homes and community care facilities in our community. A constituent has reached out to us on an important point regarding sober living and community care facilities. The state licensing requirements exempt us from putting in too many restrictions on them.
Actually, yeah. I was just going to ask, why don't you pause? Anyone who wishes to leave at this point, please leave so that we can continue our meeting.
I'm usually heard over people.
No, just, Councilmember Coleman? This is your opportunity to leave...
This is an opportunity to leave.
Oh, he's looking for his phone. Okay, Councilmember, Councilmember Coleman, go ahead. And if somebody can help him, yeah. Go ahead, Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to refer an item to staff in the Planning and Community Development Committee for review regarding sober living and community care facilities. A constituent has raised an important point regarding the sober living and community care facilities. The state licensing exempts certain residential rehabilitation facilities from local zoning regulations. However, those statutes also say that a city or county may request denial of a license if there is an over-concentration of these facilities in an area. The question is, if we don't know where they are, how do we know if we have over-concentration? So I don't know that there's a big problem with sober living facilities, but the fact that we don't know where they are is a little bit troubling. So what I'm asking staff to do is recommend ways we can legally and reasonably track and manage the placement of those facilities while respecting state and federal requirements. And the goal is not to stop these facilities from providing services, but to ensure we have the tools to prevent excess cluttering in one area to protect neighborhood character. So that's going to be my referral.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. Other colleagues who wish to speak? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of comments. I was going to make a referral. We had a Ming Avenue repaving on the agenda tonight. And we have a lot of repaving jobs, and they're not always on the agenda. Sometimes we do our own. But it was brought up by the community members today about, you know, when we repave streets, how do we stripe them? And we don't ever really know until it happens. And so if those plans could come to the Multimodal Committee and we could actually look at them before it got built, that would be great. There are also a couple items that I just wanted to say hurrah to tonight. The contract with the fair, for the fair police, you know, historically, it was the sheriff's department that covered that. In the last few years, the BPD has covered it. And I think that's due to the growth and PSVS opportunities. And now the BPD is able to provide better safety for the entire community. And also the behavioral health agreement that we've done for three years now, where many calls are not handled by the police. The behavioral health defers those and takes care of them. And again, that's more efficiency and better things are happening because of PSVS. So I just wanted to point those out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Other colleagues who wish to make remarks? Seeing none, we stand adjourned at 10 o'clock.